Most likely to take for granted, but it's also one of the easiest to recycle. The key to grass recycling starts right here. Anyone who has a lawn has spent many weekends dreading this chore. With grass recycling, you don't need to rake it or bag it. Just leave the clip in All right. Good evening, everyone. It's October fourteenth. Regular meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. In person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak forum to the clerk. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom webinar meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to speak on is called. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Gristanti.
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Present.
Councilmember Yurin.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temerkins.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any speaker cards or remote speakers?
No, we don't have any speaker slips. We don't have any participants or raised hands in Zoom for the closed session items.
All right. All right. With that, we'll now recess to a closed session, discuss the items listed on the closed session closed session agenda. We'll reconvene at five thirty P. M. To begin the regular session and hear the closed session report.
Okay, everyone, please have a seat. All right, the October fourteenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak forum to the clerk. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom webinar meeting printed on the agenda. And raise hand, raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to speak on is called. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Gresanti.
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Present.
Councilmember Euring.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Riggins.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. Ranger Tim, pledge of allegiance. Thank you. All right, may we have a closed session report?
Yes, at four fifteen P M., the city council met an open session and recessed a closed session of the items listed on the posted agenda. All five council members were present and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. All right. May we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on October fourth, twenty twenty four, with the amended agenda posted on October eleventh, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. May we have an approval of the agenda? Mayor?
I'd like to modify the agenda and ask that we adjourn in the memory of former city treasurer Pete Lippman. He was the first city treasurer we had, I believe, and also in the name of, in the memory of Paul Randall, who was a longtime resident of Malibu who passed away a week ago.
Steve?
Yeah, I was gonna, after we adjourn in the memory of Joe Ruggles, who was one of the founders of the city, so.
We'll add that to the list. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We've got a motion to approve the agenda. I have a second.
Second.
All right, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, agenda is approved. All right. Let's see. By the way, everybody, we're in a new format tonight and we're gonna mess it up, so just stick with us. All right, next item is the consent calendar. Remote participants, raise your hand in Zoom if you'd like to speak on the consent calendar. And do we have any in-person or speaker cards?
We don't have any speaker slips, but we do have some raised hands in Zoom.
All right, before we do the public comments on any part of this, I want to start off with a statement that I made at the last meeting, and I'll refresh everybody on the way we want to handle public comments. The city attorney and I recently discussed the concerns raised about public comments, both on items not on the agenda as well as on specific items. We are all aware that all speakers have their First Amendment rights that we all agree need to be protected and preserved. While we may not agree with and may even be offended by their comments, they have a free speech right to make those comments. We do have the opportunity to cut short comments that are not relevant to the agenda item that is being discussed. For public comments not on the agenda, usually item number four, starting today, comments on this section need to relate to matters within the city's subject matter jurisdiction. We have a busy agenda tonight, so if speakers persist in speaking on topics beyond what is called for by the agenda item, and they have been warned, their time will be cut short. With that, you say we don't have any speaker cards, but we do have on Zoom, correct?
The hands were lowered.
All right. Took care of that. All right. Any council members like to pull any of the consent items?
Three B eight.
Three B eight? Eight.
One B eight, excuse me.
One B eight. Any others? Being none, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the, with amendment for one B, one B eight and? Is it, it's only one B eight, correct?
Only one B eight.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of one B eight.
A second.
All right. Any further discussion? If there's none, I'll do a roll call, I mean, a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, motion is approved. With that, let's move to one B eight.
I pulled it. I don't need a report. I'll just say that I dissented from this item before it got on the consent calendar, so I'm gonna dissent again tonight, but, so we need to have a vote on it separate from the others.
Any other discussion?
Councilor, your microphone.
But two quick questions, if I may, and let me just get to that Stanford board here. Somewhere in there. I assume all the rules we currently have in place stay in place, so the formula retail doesn't change as a result of any of this, right?
That's correct. The terms of the master lease are not changing other than the assignment.
Cool. And there was one section in there that I read, if I can find it again, that when it comes back, somebody can make changes to it or adjustments. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what, which part you're referring to. I think we also have Todd G. If it's a question about one of the particular documents.
Well, okay, I can't find it. Don't worry about it. I'll pass. Better go. Paul, microphone.
I have a question. Do we know, have the name of the management company that's gonna be managing the, for the new owner?
Yes. I think it's the I D S Real Estate Group and Mr. Paul Holman.
Holman, H O L man.
O H L M A N N.
It's on page three. Sorry. Thank you.
Anything, anybody else? Any further discussion? All right, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second, and we have motion and a second. No further discussion. Voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
And we haven't obtained or?
Opposed.
Opposed, okay. Kelsey, is that, you got that?
Yes, that's clear for the record. The motion carries four one with Councilmember Silverstein opposed.
Thank you. All right, next item up is the ceremonial presentations. We have a very important one today, twenty-five years for the farmer's market. And because of the relationship, I asked Councilmember Steve Euring to be the one to present. So if you would please come forward. Couple things to say here, then we'll give you a chance. All right, I've known Deborah and the farmer's market of Cornucopia Foundation.
Yes.
For some twenty-five years, and I'm gonna jump back in my Wayback machine for a couple moments and take you back to how I got to know these folks in the beginning. Deborah and Remy O'Neil wanted to develop programs for children, adults, teaching them sustainability through the understanding of the natural world. So what was written, what they did, and this is written up by one of the reporters. Walking upon the base, they set up a, a area at Malibu High School where they were doing gardening and bringing people in. So this is what people wrote about it. Walking upon the grounds of Cornucopia at Malibu High School is an experience that touches upon all of the senses. The alluring sight is filled with the sense of hummingbird sage, lavender, bright vibrancy of poppies, giant sunflowers, native trees, nature's delicious flavors, including pineapple, gravis, strawberries, tomatoes, zucchini, and potatoes. The beauty of this lush edible landscape and natural outdoor classroom exists from the hard work completed by Cornucopia dynamic founders Deborah Bianco and Remy O'Neil.
And one other person who's not mentioned, Danny Malley.
Okay, got it, got it, okay. Bianco and O'Neil teach children, element, teach children elementary through high school and outdoor classrooms and offer workshops and seminars for adults. There is also a citizen scientific program, an interactive and hands-on program that teaches students biology, conservation, and the observation of birds and bird habitats. They pass this information on to the Cornell University lab. The kids get to be citizen scientists because the data they collect and send to Cornell, it gets published online for the scientists of the world's view and research. The sense of their self-worth is an all-time high, and we have the honor of owning this curriculum. While the Malibu High School experiment is no longer there, it got burnt out in the fire, wiped it out, okay? Cornucopia Foundation still, has not stood still. Today, with Farmer's Market, they run a Pos for Cause program that allows prominent animal rescue initiative aimed at addressing the plight of abandoned and neglected animals within our community. And they've also got a Green Wave program where participants will have a chance to learn about the vital role of watersheds and preserving beaches, creeks, aquatic and land habitats, as well as the rich cultural history intertwined with these environments. From bird walks to nature journaling sessions, the event caters to the diverse interests while fostering deeper appreciation of our natural surroundings. Now, in my mind, the most important contribution Farmer's Market makes to the city is they provide us, in addition to providing us with fresh, healthy fare, they develop a meeting place for the residents. Ever since the Woolsey Fire, it's been important for the residents to get, and get together and learn about each other, talk to each other, and spend some time. And the Corner, the Farmer's Market every Sunday allows us to do that. So Deborah, I'm very proud to be presenting you with this commendation for your twenty-five years of support for Malibu and its residents. You've made all of our lives better, and I thank you for that. So let me read, let me read the commendation and then Debbie, you can say a few things. Whereas the Cornucopia Foundation is a multifaceted organization committed to the promotion of local agriculture, animal welfare, and environmental education, making invaluable contributions to the Malibu community for twenty-five years. And whereas the Malibu Farmer's Market is served as the heart of Malibu, fostering community engagement by uniting local farmers, artisans, residents, thereby providing access to nutritious farm-fresh produce while supporting local businesses. Whereas the Cornucopia Foundation, committed to animal welfare, is evident through their Pos up events, which have given countless rescued animals a second chance at life, at life by helping them find loving homes within our community. Whereas the Foundation's environmental advocacy is exemplified through the Green Wave events, which inspire cultural sustainability by educating and empowering individuals of all ages to adopt sustainable practices, advocate for conservation, and protect our natural environment for generations to come. Whereas the Malibu Farmer's Market not only provides access to healthy farm-fresh food, but also enhances the social and cultural fabric of our community by supporting local artists, entertainers, poets, creating a thriving marketplace that celebrates the diversity and creativity of the, of Malibu. And whereas the Cornucopia Foundation's mission is to foster a vibrant and sustainable community through their dedication to agricultural, animal welfare, and environmental leadership, it has, it has had a lasting positive impact on Malibu, making our city healthier, more compassionate, and an environmentally conscious place to live. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the Malibu City Council does hereby acknowledge and celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary, anniversary of the Malibu Farmer's Market, recognizing the Cornucopia Foundation's enduring efforts to unite, nourish, and enrich our community through their tireless support of local agricultural, agricultural, animal welfare, and environmental solution. I got it, I'm done. All right, Deborah, you're on. Thank you very much.
Gosh. Thank you so much, Steve. Thank you, City Council. I really thank you. You know, one of the ladies here said to me, oh, boy, it's gonna be another blue moment for the Cornucopia Foundation. And somebody said, no, they're getting an award. She said, woo. Right there, okay. Anyway, what Steve was saying, and thank you, honest to God, thank you, each and every one of you, is so true. I do want to thank Remy O'Neil. She was a co-founder, Danny Malley, and we've, we've done it. We've done it. We made it. We worked with so many of you. And we were the first to get hands-on education in California. And it was here that it happened, in Malibu. So we're really proud of that. But you know what I'm gonna announce tonight that I'm really, really excited about? What's gonna happen with the Cornucopia Foundation and what are they up to for the next twenty-five years? Well, Paul, so no. They don't go away. I'm teasing, Paul. I really am. I have a joyful heart right now. I do, a very joyful heart. Okay? What we're up to right now, and we already have sponsors. We just started, as we started the Malibu Farmer's Market, and our mission is completed as far as getting environmental education in the schools. We did it. And we're gonna keep an eye on those schools. But right now, we just started a new thing, and it is called the Malibu Con Film Festival. The first one of its kind. It's going nationwide. It's done for animals. So people could send in short films of their animals, dogs, cats, et cetera. I don't want to keep you guys here too long. We are creating a board of judges. It, we're following the real con festival. We already have some sponsors. I'm proud to announce that Alloz is a diamond sponsor, Malibu Times is a golden sponsor, C C, excuse me, oh, just say C C Woods is another golden sponsor, and more are coming on. And we're really excited about it. I mean, we really put it all together, and we decided, we heard, there was a little birdie that came by and said that we might be getting one of these. I think her name was Alexa. And we decided to, knowing that we had to be here tonight, not that she said anything prior to that, and knowing that we had to be here, we thought, what a great place to, to announce it. So really excited. So for the next twenty-five years, we're gonna raise money, okay, for all those homeless animals. It's getting bigger and bigger. And really, guys, getting back to the point, thank you. It's been a long time coming.
And I think with a statement like was made by Steve, you understand why I defer to him to be the one to present the certificate. Very well done, council member. All right, we have another presentation being made. I'd like to ask William Bema or his mother to come to the podium, please. You know, every once in a while, you actually run across a hero. Is this, William?
No.
Oh, your brother, okay. You gotta, you need to be proud of your brother. Big brother, I assume, right?
Yeah.
All right. You know, it's fun to do presentations for a lot of things. But every once in a while, we have an opportunity to recognize someone that did above and beyond, and some people would even say a hero. And I think that's what we have here tonight. And I'd like to read the presentation because I think it says everything you need to know about what happened, and it's wonderful, young man. I don't know why he's not here tonight, but he's here with us.
I don't know why he's not here tonight, but he's here with us in spirit, I know. All right, I'll read the message. Oh, we've got a good picture of him. All right. I will show the council members, all right? And to the audience? So let me read, let me read the certificate. Whereas on April 3rd, 2024, William Bema was driving in Malibu Canyon when bystanders waved him down to assist a woman who had just driven off the cliff. And whereas William immediately scrambled down the canyon to reach the driver despite the dangerous terrain and potential risk, and whereas William provided assistance and comfort until emergency services arrived. Whereas William's actions serve as an example of humanitarian spirit, inspiring others to emulate his selfishness and compassion. Now therefore, be it resolved that Malibu City Council commends William Bema for his acts of bravery and courage to assist a stranger in distress. Thank you very much. I'd like to say too that we have the fire chief here, and we also have our sheriff's liaison. So call of duty and service to the community is with those people. If he's ever looking for an opportunity, you might put his name in over there. Fire department raises a hand first, but I know the sheriff's department would like to have him too. All right, so you'd like to say a few words?
Yes.
Please tell us about your son.
Yes, hi, everyone. I am Marianne Bema. I am well-known in the community because I have involved my children in the, to assist the community in schools and where we live. So William is a very kind boy. I am so proud of him, but today he's not with us because he went back to Germany to continue his, his education. So the day, the event, the accident happened, he was driving his border to a basketball practice. When he arrived in the canyon, he saw people waving at him. He stopped, a car just drove there. He didn't even wait, he just ran into the canyon. And he told me it took him like 10 minutes to get down the canyon. So he arrived there, he saw the person who was out of the car, only her fingers were shaking. So he talked to her, he reconfort her, he picked her phone and called the 911, the K. Yes, and they tried to rescue her. So I was so proud of William. It's not the first time he has been doing something like that. He has also, he was involved in helping some other people in the accident and in the church also. So he was always going to the church to help in the church and help children. So, and some parents are very proud of him also. So he is not here today, but he told me that I should greet any one of you and let you know that his heart is still here. And I also forgot something. After that, William went, while the woman drove into the canyon, he cleaned up the soil, and he, someone gave him a coat. So he enlarged the pictures of that lady and put there, and he was always going there to put flour on where she drove in the canyon. I'm so proud of him. Yeah.
All right.
All right.
So when I was there, we were going to the 24 Hour Fitness in Topanga, near the Topanga Mall. And then on our way, we, the bystanders were there, as she said. And as soon, he just parked the car on the other side, went over there, and I saw him like go down there. And it was really brave of him to do that, and I support him a lot for doing that.
It's nice to have a big brother.
Yeah.
All right.
And we know Marianne is a wonderful chef also.
Hey, I just say, children don't grow up by themselves like that and become heroes. So we owe gratitude to the parents as well.
And I'm sure that raised hand from the fire department or the sheriff's department applies to the brother as well. I can see an explorer scout somewhere in that young man's future. All right. With that, we have covered the ceremonial presentations. Do we have any, let's see, we've got fire season outlook presentation. That would be Susan Duenez and your associates.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we have with us Chief Drew Smith to give us the outlook for our peak fire season this year. And then following his presentation, my staff will come up and just briefly tell you what we've been doing to prevent, mitigate, and prepare for fire season. And with that, Chief Smith.
We good? We hear it? Well, I just want to start out with, what a great story. That's heroic. It really is. That's amazing to act. That's amazing. We like that. So thank you to sharing your story. I know that was just a small part of it as well. So I'm sure there was a lot of emotion at the home that was shared. So thank you for, thank you for that. It serves us all. We need those kind of things in our world today. Thank you. All right, so for fire department business, which that's a great segue in a fire department business. So if you don't know me, Drew Smith, I'm the Assistant Fire Chief. So I'm your fire chief for the city of Malibu. And a lot of things are going on, but I wanted to start with saying thank you to your support to the Los Angeles County Fire Department. We enjoy and are proud to protect Malibu with our law partners, of course. Where'd he go? He already left? Yeah. Well, there he is, Mr. MRC, there's over there. And your fire family's doing good. So we're healthy, you've been busy this season. There's been a lot of fire activity in California and across the southwestern United States, and we've been helping with that firefighting endeavor. In fact, besides the all-risk emergencies, we've also had people in the Carolinas and also Florida. So we've been deployed in one sense or fashion or another all summer. With that, just want to talk about what 2024 looks like. So there's a lot of intelligence that goes on to what fire season's about. And I'm a true believer that there is a fire season, especially for the Santa Monica Mountains. So we know that that prime fire season starts to ramp up as we get towards the Fourth of July. And that's because Mother Nature turns off the sprinkler system, so things start to dry out, which is normal. And we know that we live in a wind-dependent fire regime in the Santa Monica Mountains. So people that have been residents here for a long time, question to the group, how many large fires do we have outside of our Santa Ana winds? Not many. We have a very nice climatology here that doesn't support large fire growth unless you have a couple things that are in play, and one of those being wind. So we know we live in a wind-dependent fire regime, and we've all lived through the Woolsey Fire, and we can go back for 100 years and see mimicked fire effects of Woolsey. So it's not an abnormality. And we know that targeting, when we get into October to Christmas, is we know that we have our Santa Ana winds. And so Drew Smith uses a couple measuring sticks. One of those is Halloween. All of us can remember or think about rainy Halloweens or windy Halloweens. Same thing with Thanksgiving and the same thing with Christmas. So that's our measuring stick that I like to say, hey, we just have to make it to Halloween. Then we look at Thanksgiving, we look at Christmas. So when Mother Nature turns on the fan, we look at precipitation and when that stimulates new growth. And it usually doesn't happen until we get into later part of November. But we really need two inches or greater to really reduce what our relative risk is for that large fire growth. So going into this season, they're saying that we're going into a La Nina year, which means that there's going to be delay in our rainfall. So no known on average, whether it's average or not for the rainfall season, and on average it's 15 inches through a rainfall season. We know the last two years, we've had 200% abnormal, which is good because we love the water, but so does the vegetation. But when you go into our normal drying time of year, we have double the amount of grass. We have a very lush, robust fuel bed, but when we get those soil moisters that are really low, things dry out, which is normal. So our relative risk for this season is actually higher than normal because we have, if you wanted to say, double the amount of grass, which is the number one contributor to support large fire growth. So with that being said, when we have that grass that's in a receptive state, high winds, moderate to warm temperatures, low relative humidities, that's the right recipe to support large fire growth. What your fire department does to target this is we use 100 years' worth of climatology. We use current climatology, forecasted weather, if you will. We look at a live fuel moisture sampling. We look at all the dead fuel moisters that are out there, and we put it, let's just say, in the Whopper computer, and it comes out with a burning index. And that gives us a gauge based upon weather values, fuels values, plus we have 100 years' worth of fire history. So we know when we can align all those values, say, today is a high-risk day. But we don't do that independently. We also are with the National Weather Service, which is our forecasting office, that we're contributors in that to help support the decision-making process on what a high-risk day is. So I know that we offer that information as posted throughout all of our platforms. We give it to the city of Malibu, so everybody's informed. And with technologies today, there's no reason not to be informed when we have a high-risk day and be proactive and know our surroundings and what we're able to do and not to do when we know we have a high-risk day. And in closing, what do we look at? Well, we know that we live in a wind-dependent fire regime. We know that it is human-in-nature caused, whether it be mechanical failure or anything else. We don't have Mother Nature lightning fires that contribute to these fires that burn to the Pacific Ocean. I can say that how fire travels in this fire regime is when you have those high-risk days. If we don't catch it within eight to 15 acres within 30 minutes, it usually gets 8,000 acres within the first four to eight hours. That equals a 25,000-acre fire over the first 12 hours because that exponential growth is spotty, and we've all seen that with a receptive fuel bed. And our most vulnerable places in the Santa Monica Mountain is at Lost Virginies Road or Malibu Canyon, Mulholland east to the Palisades. That's the last third of the Santa Monica Mountains that hasn't seen fire frequency within the last 15 to 25 years. So going back to the Woolsey Fire, some of that area didn't see fire frequency since the 78 Cannon Fire. So why do these fires get so big? When you have energy release that comes out of that mature fuel bed at a critical state for that vulnerable position to create large fire growth, it really challenges our tactical opportunities based upon high winds and low relative humidities and the rate of spread of that fire. So can you have a fast-moving fire in the Woolsey Fire footprint? Yes, you can. But our tactical opportunities are significantly different in a five-year-old fuel bed compared to a 25 or 50-year-old fuel bed. So just a little fire ecology lesson, so on the why on some of it. One thing that we've added for the area, we have three additional chief officers now, so a total of six serving the Santa Monica Mountains. So we have three that are inland on the 101 side, and then we have an additional three that are Fire Station 78 Carbon Canyon where my office is. So we have more overhead to help support the command structure on these fires. We still go into an augmented staffing pattern toward, you've seen them along the 101 freeway. We put them at King Gillette Ranch. We put them, our engine companies, we know we have a high-risk day, so we do a surge type with our resources. We do augmented staffing with our hand crews at Camp Eight. We bring on more helicopters, bulldozers. And so we also have a cooperative agreement with LA City Fire Department, Ventura County Fire Department, Orange County Fire Department to share aircraft and resources on an immediate need basis. But knowing that with tactics, aircraft aren't always the answer, and that's because when you have high wind speeds, it significantly challenges their efficiency. We can't, we can't, bless you, we can't use fixed-wing aircraft when sustained winds are 35 miles an hour greater. Our rotary wing aircraft have some limitations, they can fly at very high wind speeds. However, for them to jettison that water to penetrate becomes very challenging in high winds. And really, if you think about when we combat these and when we start to turn the corner on them, is when the wind stops blowing. And then it turns into a topography-dominated fire that we can actually catch. So I know in a lot of places on this, I don't even know if Susan even wanted to hear any of this, for crying out loud. Anyhow, is there any questions for me? Yes?
First of all, thank you for that presentation. I appreciate that. So on a high-risk day, are you doing more to identify a fire when it starts so that you can catch it before it grows?
We do. So we have-
Tell us about that, please.
I would love to. So we have the Alert Wildfire Camera System that can detect by, it's monitored with our organization also at Lost Hills with a warning center that's in there now that was the vision of Captain C2. So those are monitored. I can say that even if we didn't have any of that, fires rarely go unreported in this area in more than 15 minutes. So, but we do have, then also we have satellite technology through the National Weather Service, which is the GO satellite that does heat detection as well. So the immediate call for service that goes to the Sheriff, CHP, or to us, we have technologies are out there to look at when a fire starts in addition to our active patrolling that we do. And that's with our organization and also with the sheriff's department with arson watch, which is highly efficient. Now, we even have another layer with our community brigade program that we're doing. So yes, so they are also going to be staffed and coupled into the Los Angeles County Fire Department. So we have that as a force multiplier, if you will, for early detection. Long answer, Bruce, I know. Thank you, that was a good question.
Anyone else? All right. I'll pose a question to you. And by the way, for those of you that don't know Chief Smith, he is the fire expert for LA County Fire. I think you referred to, I don't know if he tell you to your face, but you're the fire whisperer.
They do, they usually do say that to my face, and it's pretty comical.
But you were also, I know, very much involved with the Bridge Fire.
Correct.
And I appreciate all your service to help those people out, but we're glad to have you back on our turf. Speaking of our turf, every morning I wake up- Speaking of our turf, every morning I wake up and we've got fog.
Love it.
I know that's helpful, but on the other side of the hill, it's 100 degrees.
Correct.
What's this doing to our, this is unusual from my memory. What's this doing to our chances of fire and what's your outlook for that?
So with, there's a definitive line, let's just say at Mulholland across from east to west through the Santa Monica Mountains. We get, as we call the interior side, the 101 side of the house to the coastal side of the house. So can we have a 30-degree temperature difference? Yes. So those fuels respond to that. When we are in fog, our relative risk for a fire to start and spread becomes very low because there's a lot of, fuels are very wet, so there's a heat sink there, if you will. So how does that affect what we're going to do? I can say that on average, we have eight Santa Ana wind events a fire season going from primarily October to Christmas. Within those red flag days, they usually last three days apiece. So we usually have somewhere around 30 days that we know we have these high-risk days and those high-risk days are from October to December. But the, this coastal climate we have significantly pumps the brakes on what we're going to have. But these fuels, when they're in this state, they can be very moist and wet one day and if Mother Nature turns on the fan, that is all forgotten. Even if we get rain at a quarter inch, it just knocks the dust off the plants. It won't stimulate any new growth. It won't stimulate grass to grow, which we need to have happen to really put us out of a very dangerous fire scenario. So we're on average right now, we're above average for the amount of wind events that we're going to have going into October to December.
First, thank you all, you and all your staff for everything you guys do. I mean, you make us sleep better at night, so thank you very much. I've been talking to a lot of people that have talked about prescribed burns. You know, if you go back when the Juma ash were living here or whatever, the idea was you took care of the fuel sources by burning them down. Now, we don't do, what do you think of that idea? I mean, is that something that you consider?
So, let me frame this. So can we mimic Mother Nature's fire regime? The answer is yes. How do we know that we can mitigate some of these large fires that happen? We didn't traditionally have large fires because we needed a lightning strike. And people ask me, and I'll get to answering the question, but I had to give you a little history lesson, is that people will say, well, how did fires get to the ocean then? Well, if we had lightning that happened in the area or even in the New Hall Pass, it would go and burn. And fire can hang in an oak tree for two to three months. And so then east winds would pick up and then that's how the fire would travel. So really to mimic Mother Nature's fire regime in this mosaic pattern that it used to have based upon lightning fires or fires that would have lightning fires here in June, July, and August is when we're our prime lightning. It's not much, but it is. And they'd get, because of what you brought up, Doug, the fog, they would burn only so big. You'd have a kidney bean, a lips of a patch of vegetation that was burnt. And Mother Nature would take care of it because the moistures of extinction, as we call, that it would self-suppress. So how do we mimic that? We can mimic that through prescribed fire. We're very surgical on how we do it. The Santa Monica Mountains, if you look at it, from the fire suppression standpoint or management point, it's very easy to manage fires in the Santa Monica Mountains in the absence of Santa Ana winds. The other way to do it is through land mammals or grazing, through goats, which we just did a big project at 69 Bravo for the 30 acres and went wonderful. Or it's mechanical modification, which I know that your Malibu Public Safety Partners or our partners are going to talk about. So there's three ways to do it. So there's a right application for each and you have to pick the right application because each one of those has an effect. We can't do prescribed fire in areas that we know that we might have a mud and debris flow later. It might be the right application for grazing because it's so steep. We don't want to bring any rocks down on the road system. We need the, don't want to create any of the soil erosion issues. So prescribed fire might not be the right fit for that. Where grazing maybe or the land mammal use or mechanical modification. But there is a place for it and can it be done successfully? It can be done successfully with being very environmentally sensitive to what we do because we love our watershed. We love our watershed. We just don't like the outcome of it when you have a Woolsey Fire. So right now you have a five-year blank canvas. We have to decide how do we want it to look? And there's ways to do that. We just all have to work together, come up with the end state of what we want it to look like.
Just, you know, there was an article in the Malibu Times maybe a month ago about some of these technology companies up in San Jose that are faced with fires. So they're coming up with these tractors that in theory can go out and mimic what a prescribed burn would do. I mean, there may be something in the future that makes our life a little easier.
I'm familiar with the technologies.
Okay, cool.
I am, I am. No, they have an application. It really does.
I again want to say thank you. But what can residents do to help the fire department to prepare our areas?
Ooh, good question. Do their defensible space and home hardening because that also increases our, when we go into a structured defense firefighting mission, a life safety mission. Because remember on, if the homeowners do their part by doing their defensible space or as we've called it forever brush clearance, they've done their home hardening practices. It's a year-round endeavor. And if they do that, that helps us out because that gives us more options. Plus, remember with evacuations, everything about evacuations comes down to time. How we go into evacuation order, a warning or a shelter in place. So meaning that a shelter in place means we don't have enough time to evacuate a certain area. Everybody knows their zone, right? Know your zone. So in the zoning in Genesis or what used to be called Zone Haven, is we look at where the fire starts, how fast its rate of spread is, how fast it's going to travel. And that, that points us to a decision on what evacuations look like. If we do not have time to evacuate people, their best option, which is going to be very scary, is to shelter in place. And so you need that defensible space. You need those home hardening practices because what we don't want people to do is go into a self-evacuation mode when we've asked for a shelter in place and have them put themselves in a position of vulnerability at 2:00 in the afternoon where it can look like 2:00 in the morning. When it's smoky, it's chokey, you can't see with your headlights or it's, it makes it very challenging. So to make your answer even longer is the defensible space and home hardening, which sets up the resident for success for having a shelter in place, knowing your home, but also gives your firefighters a chance for defending that home. And it gives you some aided security, knowing that if we do go through an evacuation order that you left early, you've looked at the ready, set, go protocols and what you need to do, you'll have a different set of satisfaction being able to know that you've done your part when a fire potentially goes through the neighborhood.
I'd hate to be the only one that didn't thank you, Drew. And I just wanted to say, it's not only true that you're very prominent in LA County. I think the entire Western United States knows who you are and comes to see you when you speak anywhere. And I think we're very, very lucky to have you and I can't thank you enough for the leadership you've shown to our area and the preparation that we're making for whatever comes next. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Appreciate the time, Bruce.
So I don't mean to prolong this, but this is important stuff, so I appreciate everything you're telling us. Are there, you know what you're doing and you know what you need to do to prevent fire from starting as best you can. Are there, what are the constraints, if any, on your ability to do that, that other than nature, that are regulatory or economical that you would like to see removed so that you could do a better job, if anything?
So it would, it would go back to any type of what I like to call land management. How are we going to be good stewards of the land and manage the land? We know that we have 100 years' worth of fire history in the Santa Monica Mountains that are going to impact people's lives. It's a life safety issue and it's a personal property issue. What we can do is come up with some alternatives to look at what is the best fit for any of these land management practices. Once again, whether it be prescribed fire or whether we use goats or mechanical modification, we have to look at that and how we want the landscape to look and also maintain that environmental sensitivity that we love so much. There's a role that we can all come together and think about what that needs to look at because we, we all know what the end result is, right? So how do we want to deal with it? We all know what the end result is.
And one question that's a little out of the box, but so I would imagine as an expert, an expert, that other than smoke, if we can get to the beach, we're relatively safe from fire. First of all, is that wrong or is that accurate?
Meaning if the residents go to the beach?
If you're, yeah, if the residents were on the beach, leaving aside smoke, is there a fire danger?
Usually not, usually not. So we have those temporary refuge areas. And so we have to think about though is on evacuation. So if people are on the beach and let's say they're at Zuma and they're on the beach, you're not going to get overrun with fire. Will you be, will it be unpleasant and smoky, the answer to that? But from where any of the vegetation is, the distance from that heat energy isn't going to be as much as if you were in a community somewhere. So you have that distance or that fire line intensity to be significantly reduced.
So why is one of our approaches to finding a safe place when there's a fire not to have a lot of oxygen masks stored at the beach and have people go to the beach and be safe from the fire?
So, well, we need the beaches for other things. That might be to put our emergency vehicles there, to set other things up, to have a logistics component there. And we need to be able to logistically support people after they evacuate. So if we put them inside the operational area, it becomes very challenging. And we're limited on space where we can actually put people. So on a small fire, could we say people could go to Zuma? Sure. But the magnitude of like a Woolsey, the Cannon Fire, even the Cannon and Corral Fire, it might not be the right fit. Is it an option? I'll tell you, the option is a yes, but it's not an absolute. So could we set up a point of distribution there? Could we have a public assembly point and if we needed to later? It's an option, but it's not an absolute. It's not an absolute. Every fire's different on how we're going to send people and give them direction on where they're going. Like Pepperdine is our only stay-in shelter in place in the Santa Monica Mountains because of the landscape there and what they have, is that is their safest option for them to be there. We don't want any of the students or the faculty navigating their own. So they'll be fine at Pepperdine.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good question. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Chief, I have to tell you, we're lucky to have you.
I'm lucky to be here. I love it.
And thanks very much for all your service and all you do. And I see Keegan back there and I know you've been a real help to our fire brigades and look forward to that being incorporated into your fire plan.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the support. Thank you.
Good evening. Brad Yocum and myself are going to expound on these couple of bullet points on our mitigation and prevention activities for the year. First up is the Hazard Tree Removal Program. This has been managed primarily by Gabe Etcheverry, who couldn't make it here tonight. And it is, as you may recall, is being funded by a grant provided by the MRCA in three different installments. He's working on the third and final installment right now and getting pretty close to the end. But over the course of that, they've been able to mitigate 670 burned out or hazardous trees that have been removed. Like I said, he's getting down toward the end and he's trying to reserve a little bit for a string of palm trees right up here across from HRL. There's, it's an Esha area, so there's a lot of paperwork and planning that needs to go into that. If that doesn't go through, then he'll reallocate that money and finish up with the residents. But that's what we're trying to do right now. So that's it for the Hazard Tree Removal Program. On home wildfire assessments, Chief Smith did mention the home hardening. We've been offering the home hardening assessments since 2019 and since then have completed 515 total assessments. And in this year, we've been able to do 38. It's a little bit of a drop from what we've seen and it's not necessarily that they're not being done. There are other entities that are doing assessments as well, such as the fire brigades. So there, there are still a lot out there that are getting done that maybe we're not seeing. We do continue through all the different social media platforms to advertise those. And just a few weeks ago, you all may have received a postcard in the mail that advertised those and we're seeing a pretty big uptick right now of interest in getting those. So that number's going to easily go up by the end of the year. So that's where we're at with the home wildfire assessments. And then I'm going to jump down to the Santa Monica Mountains Regional Fire Safe Council. Pardon me. So Fire Safe Councils are established to kind of get a community or a region or an area kind of all going in the same direction and doing the same thing in regards to wildfire preparedness. And this effort to establish the Santa Monica Mountains Regional Fire Safe Council was started by Hadi Hamid from the LA County Forestry Division and assisted closely by Megan Courier, who's a public safety liaison right here at Fire Station 70. So their goal is to kind of unite the whole region, including the five cities in the COGS so that we're all kind of doing the same thing, including tracking all the wildfire assessments are happening. Right now, we don't know what other entities are doing and under something like a Regional Fire Safe Council, we could all kind of be reporting and doing the same thing. So it will help in that regard as well. Another big one, Brad is going to talk about Firewise Communities. Firewise Communities are kind of grassroots neighborhood groups that are set up. It's kind of a step above the individual assessment. Then you have the Firewise Communities where everybody's trying to work together for fire preparedness. But they're grassroots. They don't have a board. They don't have a budget. They don't, they're not 501(c)(3). They're not anything like that. So the Fire Safe Council has the ability to act as an umbrella organization over those Firewise Communities, again, to help them, keep them motivated and moving forward and learning new information. And because they are a 501(c)(3), they, they're incorporated, they have an executive board. With all of that, they're able to apply for grants and then they can distribute those grants out among the Firewise Communities. So it's going to be a really positive thing for this whole region. So that's been in the works for about nine months. The board was, the executive board was established again with Hadi Hamud as the, I guess you'd call him the president and Megan Courier, the treasurer, Brian Cameron from Epic in Calabasas as the secretary, and then Brad and myself as director. So that's the five. They're going to try to add two more to that. And during those last nine months or so, primarily Hadi and Megan have done the articles of incorporation, established a 501(c)(3), applied for a grant to CAL FIRE and they were granted $800,000 money to start getting that going. They've also received an $18,000 plus grant from Supervisor Horvath's office, kind of some seed money to get going. And then in addition to that, Fire Safe Council can be an all-volunteer organization, but something as large as this. There is going to be an executive director who is Pauline Allen, who's coming from the Santa Monica Mountains Resource Conservation District. And then she actually started last week in a paid position. And then later down the road, Danielle, I forget her last name, but she will come on as kind of the operations manager. So they're closely modeling after the Ventura County Fire Safe Council, which is very, very successful. They have kind of fire liaisons like we are that go out and do home assessments and they do a lot of great community education. So anyway, that's what they're kind of modeling after and so they really just kind of got up and running. So it's going to be a little while before they're going to be able to start doling out the money to the Firewise Communities, but at least they're up and running now and that'll be coming in the future. And Brad's going to cover the rest. Any questions on that stuff or should we wait till the end?
Any questions? Brad, you're up.
Okay. Bradley Yocum, one of the other fire safety liaisons. Thank you for having us here tonight. To just kind of play off of what Chief Smith said, somebody asked the question of what can residents do? And one of the things is having us, one of the three of us, come out and do a home wildfire assessment, which is a focused, home hardening, brush clearance type of assessment for that homeowner. Spouting out to these Firewise Communities, this is kind of started out, we're assisting the National Fire Protection Agency and CAL FIRE. And in CAL- And in CAL FIRE right now, we're close to 1,000 just in the state of these, it's a grassroots thing that the community members actually do. We currently have six in the city of Malibu. I have five in the hopper. We have five in the hopper that also want to be, we're in different processes of their application. We just actually submitted another one. That's going to be number seven. And basically what it does is the homeowners, the community get together and they make their community safe. Brush clearance, home hardening. So these fire guys that come in, they have a place to stay safe while they're putting themselves at risk that they can save a community. And when the fire does come through, and it will, potential is, goes way down because this ember cast that comes into these communities will substantially be reduced because of the biomass that's taken out of these areas. And that's what we're looking for. We're trying to get as many Firewise Communities as we can in the city limits. And Hadi and LA County Fire Forestry, they're doing to the corridor, the 101 corridor. So we're hoping to have a whole bunch of Firewise Communities. Couple of things benefiting that, that are people, it's already happening, getting phone calls to get the certificates of people who didn't get their insurance canceled. Now, there's no guarantee, but this being a Firewise Community helps enabled insurance coming saying, oh, this community is doing something, so you may not get canceled. Also, there's discounts available. Besides that, there's grant money that will be more available if you are a Firewise Community down the road with this Santa Monica Mountains Regional Fire Safe Council, the umbrella like Jerry was mentioning. So it's really important. It's off and running and people are calling us a lot to get involved. So that's pretty much it on the Firewise. The other thing that we've worked on here, especially here at the Malibu City Hall, we've done our annual brush clearance. We do that every year, 200 to 200 to 300 feet away from the structure here. Next year, we're hoping, maybe next year, to utilize goats to actually do the work. And then the areas, all the city properties have been cleared or in the process of being cleared. They should have been cleared by now. The other thing is the resolution declaration for the existence of a local emergency. We also, part of our job here is to monitor live fuel moisture. And last week it attained, it's not considered critical, it's considered critical at 60, but it reached that threshold of 65%. So I believe tonight you guys are going to vote on there of making that because most of the fires that we monitor are actually from the unhoused folks that live in the canyons. So it's a big deal and if we can do this resolution, there'll be something put in place to take these unhoused people and give them another place that they can stay. And hopefully it will reduce the potential for a fire start. So that's pretty much it. What I have, vast majority of my time has been working on the Firewise Communities.
We already approved that resolution about an hour ago.
Excellent. Any questions at all about the Firewise or anything else?
Paul?
Are we making any progress at all convincing the federal, state and local park systems to do a little fuel reduction on their properties? I know they got exempted by the state about six years ago, but I'd love to see them pitching in a little bit.
A lot of the communities that I've dealt with, especially with these Firewise, they have, like Malibu West, they talked to the National Park Service or other entities, MRCA. And it's hit and miss on occasion, but they have a working relationship with a lot of these entities and the clearance is, but the specifics on each site is different. Some of them do their clearance, others do not. Some of them do it later in the year. But with this Firewise, I go back to this, it's a community involvement and if they can get a hold of whoever that is and they have a relationship with them, then the brush could be cleared, you know, around their locations.
Thank you.
Mary Ann?
I didn't see the list of who has been considered a Firewise Community.
Oh, right now we have Malibu West. This is what the CAL FIRE and MFPA calls in good standing. It means they're doing everything appropriate to maintain their in good standing status. Malibu West, Malibu Canyon Village, Portico at Malibu, Rambo Pacifico, who just got approved, Malibu Country Estates and Big Rock Maces. Those are the six. The ones on deck right now we have is our Malibu Gardens, Paradise Cove, Zumariz and Tuscana and Vista Pacifica Broad Beach. And then we have a bunch that are kind of waiting in the shade, waiting for me to get done with this and waiting for us to get done with it. It's actually, it's become easier to do. Initially, it was kind of a cumbersome thing, but with practice, we're starting to get the, and it's getting pushed through and they're being approved. So it's a work in progress.
Mary Ann?
I was just going to say, if a property owner has what they believe is a hazardous tree, do they just contact the public safety department to find out if they qualify?
Yeah, they can contact us. We can talk with the jurisdictional fire station if we want to get their involvement. We have really no authoritative power, but what we can do is go out and talk to the neighbor or whoever the property owner is, or we can write some type of a letter to see if we can get compliance. A lot of times, just by talking to each other, the neighbor A and B can get it resolved. But at times we'll write these letters and we've had pretty good success over the years of getting someone to comply. And if it is an issue, if we could get county ag involved or the fire department, it depends on each individual. And sometimes if it's a dead tree, sometimes we can, well, Gabe's out of money now, but we could utilize that and people say, oh, it's free and they want to get rid of it. So.
Steve?
Just a real quick one. I attended the running of the goats in Western Malibu when that took place. And there, the first, one of the people who were there was Linda Gibbs, which is Keegan's mother. And one of the reporters asked her what she thought about having goats and she gave them a dissertation about the benefits of having.
Oh, they're great.
I mean, you know, they took care of the non-native vegetation, they helped the native vegetation, they fertilized. I mean, so it was a story that you'd say, we all should be doing this.
That's what I'm saying. Next year, I'm hoping that we can get them here.
Right. Cool. And thank you, mom.
It runs in the family. All right. Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the preparedness efforts that we've completed in the year 2024. So first off, you see, refresh the emergency bins. The city has multiple emergency supply bins located throughout the city of Malibu. The public safety team, as well as the community emergency response team, have been working to update and maintain those bins. These bins are stocked with basic emergency supplies and also some can serve as disaster information sites, providing emergency information, such as evacuation orders and routes, assistant resources and shelter locations during any type of large scale disaster. Next, you'll see conducted EOC training for staff. In 2024, the City of Malibu Public Safety Department held many city staff trainings. These training courses are conducted to ensure staff are prepared to respond to a variety of disasters. We conducted multiple EOC software trainings, earthquake training, fire safety trainings, evacuation trainings and CPR and AED trainings. Next up, we have updated the emergency operations plan. In 2023, the city began the process of updating the emergency operations plan. The emergency operations plan addresses the city of Malibu's planned response to emergency situations associated with natural disasters, technological incidents and national security emergencies. In California, all governmental emergency plans are required to comply with the state's standardized emergency management system, also known as SIMS, as well as FEMA's National Incident Management System, also known as NIMS, in order to be eligible for state and federal disaster assistance. Next, we have gained access to the LA RIX system. The Los Angeles Regional Interoperable Communication System, commonly known as LA RIX, is a multimillion dollar state of the art array of radio repeaters and trunking systems. These systems are available for use by cities and public safety agencies countywide. LA RIX provides a common operating platform and vastly improves overall radio and broadband communication capabilities with law enforcement, firefighters, paramedics and other emergency response agencies in LA County. The city has signed subscription agreement with LA RIX for service for 30 radios and has been assigned five individual taught groups for the city of Malibu. Next, we have conducted fire extinguisher and CERT training for the community. The city has provided community response team training and community fire extinguisher training for the community. We had approximately 15 participants complete the CERT class as well as 16 complete the fire extinguisher class. And we have an additional fire extinguisher class coming up this week on Wednesday. Oh, I'm sorry. Is it this week or next week? This week. Yes, I apologize. So this week on Wednesday. Next, we have hosted a public safety and preparedness fair. So on Sunday, September 15th, the public safety department and the community emergency response team hosted its sixth annual safety and preparedness fair. This event is part of Malibu's efforts to help the community prepare for wildfires, earthquakes and any other disasters. The event brought in emergency preparedness service and product vendors and emergency response agencies and was the largest event to date with 300 plus attendees. So that is all I have for our preparedness efforts for 2024. And if you guys have any questions.
Paul?
Sarah, when's the next CERT class for people who are interested in getting involved?
The next CERT class is scheduled for February of 2025.
What do we charge people to be in a CERT class?
The CERT class is free.
What a tremendous value.
It is. It is normally a seven week course. We normally have one class per week, but this class coming up in February, we did condense the class to three weeks and we will be doing two to three classes per week. So it did shorten that overall timeframe, but it is scheduled for February of 2025.
Thank you.
Mary Ann?
And what does the person get for the benefit of their community by being part of CERT?
So the CERT class goes over a lot of different information from medical response to, they talk about different types of evacuations and how to prepare yourself. And then after you receive that certificate for completing the class, you can move forward to be a part of the CERT team. And that we have a very large CERT team, which is a volunteer group for Malibu with about approximately 50 volunteers on our team as of right now.
Paul? Steve? I'm going to Paul, Bruce, sorry.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. By the way, I'll mention one thing since we're promoting CERT, I will say about the fire extinguisher classes. Every time I've watched that take place, about half the people start off doing it wrong. So it's a very essential course. People have fire extinguishers all over the place, but they've never used them. And this is a, by the way, how much does it cost to do the fire extinguisher class?
That class is free as well.
Wow. We are missing every opportunity here. And honestly, you should take it. If you've got a fire extinguisher at home, this is a free chance to use it and test it. Not that, not the one you have at home, but that will provide you the equipment to test it and learn how to use it. Okay. Sarah, anything else?
That is all I have unless you have any more questions.
With that, is that Susan, are we done? All right. Alexis, you're up next.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm going to, I'm going to speed through this presentation. All the puns are intended. But SB 1297, as you and I believe the community are aware, was signed into law by Governor Newsom. We do have some photos of that. What I intend to do this evening briefly is just to give an overview of what comes next as to the law becomes effective in January 2025. And what we're doing as staff to set very aggressive goals and deadlines. We're going to go over what has been done briefly here. So on August 30th, SB 1297 passed out of the California Legislature, meaning it passed out of the Assembly and Senate and headed to the governor's desk. It was then signed by Governor Newsom on September 27th. While we were eagerly awaiting the governor's signature, staff led by our public safety director, Susan Duñez, and with our public works director, Rob Duboe, put together an aggressive implementation plan is what I'll call it. But we do want to make sure that we emphasize that there are certain statutes written in this bill that we have to adhere to. So I'm going to briefly go through that tonight just because it will align with what our milestones are as we go through the presentation. So once we were, we were ready though to go into action, we swiftly issued the RFP for the Use Policy and Impact Report. This is a requirement of the implementation of the speed camera systems. And just to clarify, the bill does authorize up to five speed camera systems. And what that is, is that is up to two cameras. So each system, two cameras, total of 10 cameras stationed throughout Malibu's 21 miles of PCH. In addition to issuing the RFP for the Use Policy and Impact Report, our public works department identified the exact placement of the speed camera systems as well. Those are Decker Canyon and then Morning View, Latigo Canyon, also between Carbon Beach Terrace and Carbon Canyon and Tuna Canyon. So in that area, and that is directly related to speed data that we have and speed collision data. There are some points where there's overlap as to injury collisions, but some of those are more due to reckless driving. So we just want to emphasize, we received some of that feedback, that where these cameras are going are directly related to speeding in Malibu and where we see those worst statistics taking place and the accidents. So moving forward, we have hopefully interviews and award with the responses to our Use Policy and Impact Report. Our timeline for that is to bring it to you November 25th for council's review. Following that, pending that award, we will launch into the development of those two items. That is scheduled to take place between December and March. Also operating or running concurrent to that, the infrastructure design, obviously the CDP, up to what we can without having a vendor for the cameras themselves. Our public works department is working on that. As long as that continues to move forward and the use policy is then also close to being completed, there are some statutes, for example, once the use policy is complete and drafted, prior to the council adopting that, we do have to have that published for a 30 day review period. And so that will be happening as well. Once adopted, we will go into the RFP for the camera systems and the administration. So you see that timeline here between March and April. Quick correction, on the bottom part of that timeline, it says March through August. It should say May through August. That is pending that the RFP is awarded for the camera system and administration of that system. We would then go into May through August, the camera acquisition and installation of Pending, there are no unforeseen delays with that. You would be looking at going live with warning notices. Again, a 60 day period is required for the speed cameras to issue those warning notices. That is set for September 1st of 2025 with a full implementation. Again, there is a public education campaign as well that is running throughout this entire implementation plan, but specifically the 30 days prior to the full implementation, where those citations move from warning notices to actual enforcement violations there. So just want to note that. And so full implementation is November 1st of 2025. And that, we will leave it there for any questions that you may have. Happy to expand on any of these, but this is very aggressive, but we recognize obviously the importance and want to make sure that we are moving as quickly as possible. Obviously, if some of these Obviously, if some of these things can be expedited as we go through, we will do so. But this is what we feel is the most realistic timeframe in order to get everything up and running. And keep in mind that these are administrative citations, they are not criminal, so therefore we do have to have a part of the city that will have to be put together to manage the issuance of the citations as well as the appeal process. So that goes into the impact report, use policy, and getting all of that implemented as well. So when we go full live implementation, we are ready to function.
All right. Any other questions, any comments? All right, I will say a couple of things real quick. The fact that we're doing this so quickly is not just testimony to the quality of our staff on this, but no one has done this in California before. In 2023, six cities were authorized to put their camera systems in. No one has done it. I think the only thing that's happened is San Francisco put in an RFP, and that's from over a year ago. People are already stunned that we have our first RFP out and the ink hasn't even really dried. Thanks to everybody over in the peanut gallery. And if there ever was a need for speed on this, and I use that carefully, think about the fact that every day we don't have these cameras in place. Somebody may be involved in an accident due to speeding and either seriously injured or killed. So this actually has a sense of urgency attached to it, and we appreciate the city staff and everyone involved putting it as a high priority. Thank you very much. Thank you, Alexis. And the Public Works and Public Safety. All right. With that, we have any commission or committee updates?
We do. We have Joe Drummond from the Public Works Commission on Zoom.
All right. Joe, go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. So obviously, we're involved in the speed camera implementation, but Public Works presented a draft traffic study for Malibu Canyon Road at our meeting last month that included different traffic safety improvements for the area. And the highlight is a possible roundabout at Malibu Canyon Road and Civic Center Way, which would mean parents could make the left for OLM and Webster in the morning, and a potential traffic signal at Harbor Vista and Malibu Crest and Malibu Canyon Road. If any of you have ever made that left, it's a little insane there. We will have a community meeting to get residents' comments on these plans and then bring it to you, council members, to include in capital projects impossibly the following year. We are waiting on, and I think that meeting is supposed to be in November, but, oh, yeah, we are waiting for, on technical specifications for the skate park, and ideally that will come in the next few weeks and then can request for bids to build it starting next year. New designing, a new design consultant could possibly be hired by the council, you guys, in November to put everything together for the snack shack is also coming. So that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else have a mission?
That's the only commission report.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart, members of council. Happy to give you my report tonight. Got a few things to share. One, wanted to follow up on a couple of items that were discussed at our last regular meeting. We are working to bring back to council, and I think we'll be able to get it back at the October 20th meeting, an item on the Mobile Home Rent Control Committee. So that will be coming back to council for your review and potential direction to staff on that. We're also, we'll be implementing soon the advertising for the committee. So that will be, look for that, that will be going out soon. Of course, once we go through that process, then we could, well, we'll bring the item to the council on 20th, see what kind of direction we get from council, but in the meantime, we'll start the advertisement for the position. And once we go through that, depending on what kind of direction we get from the council, we could come back and make appointments and get that committee reconstituted back going. So look for that on the 20th. Also wanted to let you know that I did speak with the state parks regarding the concerns that were brought up with the Serra Retreat and the bridge and the Arundo. The park superintendent is willing to work with us on the Arundo removal. He asked that we get that information to him so that they can follow up. The issue with the bridge is a bit more complicated. We will have some further conversations with state parks, and I know our Public Works Director has reached out to the residents in Serra, so we will continue to follow up on that. Also wanted to report that for the PCH Master Plan feasibility study, as you know, we've had a number of workshops, and Caltrans added a sixth public workshop. That one is going to be held here in the council chambers on Wednesday, October 23rd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That is in-person only. There is no remote participation option on that. So this is going to be the sixth round that they've had now and getting feedback from the community. And of course, in the first couple of rounds, they gathered input from the residents round, and then the subsequent round, they focused on getting feedback on the design alternatives and other recommendations to improve safety. Then based on that feedback, they've, they've made some fine tuning, and so they will come back with this workshop to present updated design alternatives and safety recommendations again on PCH for comments. So again, that's gonna be Wednesday, October 23rd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here at City As we approach the one-year anniversary of the tragic accident that claimed the lives of the four Pepperdine students, I want to take a moment to provide an update on the plans for honoring their memory and discussing the important progress made since that day. On October 17th, there'll be a candlelight vigil. This first event will be a candlelight vigil on October 17th at the Ghost Tires Memorial located at PCH and Webb Way. The gathering will start at 6:30 p.m. with the ceremony at 7:00 p.m. This will be a community event dedicated to the remembrance of the four students and provide a time for us to come together, reflect, and honor their lives. Following that, there will be a media event on the next day, on October 18th. There will be a press conference and media event that will be at 6 o'clock, also at the Ghost Tires. This event will mainly focus on the progress made since the tragedy, but also recognize the work that we still have ahead. City officials will be joined by representatives, including Senator Allen, Assemblymember Irwin, Supervisor Horvath, and representatives from the Sheriff's Department, CHP, Streets Are For Everyone, and members of the community. We will be highlighting ongoing initiatives to improve safety while acknowledging the additional work that we are doing to address safety on PCH. Happy to report, and no surprise here, but for the 23rd year in a row, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the City of Malibu for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th. Report was judged by an impartial panel to meet the highest standards of the program, which include demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate the city's financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. I just want to take a moment to thank the Finance Department, Joe Tony, Renee Nierman, all the staff there. They do a fantastic job. This is the fourth city I've worked at, and by far, I have to say, this is the best finance department that I've had the pleasure to work with. They handle everything seamlessly and with virtually no complaints. So hats off to the Finance Department. They truly don't get enough credit for all that they do. The draft housing element has been submitted to the state, to HCD, for review and comment in ultimate concurrence. Of course, the council approved that with its second reading tonight, so we will wait for comments back from HCD. But fingers crossed, all is moving forward well there. Also wanted to report to council that the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board will consider a revision to the MOU, Memorandum of Understanding that they have with the city regarding the prohibition of onsite wastewater disposal systems in the Malibu Civic Center, commonly referred to as Phase Two. They're gonna take that up at November 21st in Los Angeles. This revision, which was previously vetted by the city council, now goes, obviously needs to have the water board's approval. City staff will be attending the meeting, and once we get that approval, we'll bring that plan back to city council for concurrence. Also wanted to announce that we have a community land special work session coming up on Thursday, October 24th at 1:00 p.m. in the city council chambers. During this meeting, community members will have the opportunity to address the city council regarding the project outcomes. We've gone through Phase Two now, the outreach and engagement process for the Malibu Community Lands. And this, this step will finalize the project outcomes report with the consultant team. So we'll be presenting that to the city council on October 24th. Councils not be taking any action at that point. We'll be giving feedback to staff, and then we will be coming back likely at a future meeting to approve that. My office has been approached by a couple of property owners who wanted to know if the city was interested in acquiring property. I brought this to the attention of the city attorney, and he indicated that I could bring this question to the city council in open session and see if there is any interest from the city to have me look further into either or both of these properties. One of them is located at 3542 Coastview Drive. It's the best probably way for me to describe it is it is a, the property is, begins just to the west of the Bell Lot, just south of Stewart Ranch Road. It is about seven acres, and it goes all the way back towards Malibu Canyon. So again, the address on that one is 3542 Coastview Drive, and it's about seven, seven plus acres. The other property is addressed at 6551 Port's Head. This property is located adjacent to the city-owned property at, blanking here. Thank you, yes. I'm blanking on what we call that property. Heather Cliff Lot, thank you. Too many words. That is just east of that lot. It's about 2.26 acres. So that's at 6551 Port's Head. So if council would be interested, I'd be happy to look into that and bring some information forward, or we can, I'd be happy to take any other direction on that.
Any comments?
I would be interested in hearing more about the Port's Head property.
I would also.
I would actually be interested in both properties, just to have the discussion. Don't want to dismiss it out of hand.
Yeah, I think, Bruce, any comment?
Information's always valuable. We should find out more.
Let's, I think you have a consensus.
Look at both of them.
Look at both of them. Let's see what we got as an opportunity. They're all nearby or contiguous to our other properties. It would be an interesting assemblage if we had an interest.
Is the Coastview property, is that behind the Smith property? Or is it the Smith, where is it the Smith property that you're talking about?
Isn't it just down? Is it down from the racquetball club? Is it the, the?
Right, and then extends west from there towards, towards Malibu Canyon. It's a pretty big lot.
It's behind what we called Smith property, the one that has the wetland?
It would be north of that, correct. Right, correct. Yeah.
At the end of this road.
Yeah, directly south of the racket club.
On the other side of the street.
Other side of the street.
Yeah, down, right.
Got you, okay, I know where.
Got it. Okay. Sounds like consensus to bring item forward in closed session if appropriate. Very good, thank you. Also wanted to note a couple of things coming up for the October 20th meeting. We will be coming back hopefully with the Mobile Home Rent Stabilization item. Also scheduled to bring back the school separation agreements. The strategic priority list, which was continued from this meeting, will be coming back. We also have an item, discussion item for a policy on naming rights of city facilities. And other item of note will be the road race agreement. Other than that, in terms of attendance, myself, Deputy City Manager, Mayor, and Mayor Pro Tem attended a tour of Camp Kilpatrick that was set up by Supervisor Horvath's office. We got to tour the facility. We actually even got to meet with some of the folks who are being held there. They gave us the whole tour, explained the improvements that they've made, what their potential future plans. They also explained that right now they have capacity for a maximum of 48, and right now they have 20 persons there. They also explained that there is a step-down process that the inmates have to go through to be able to basically earn the ability to be transferred to Camp Kilpatrick, and that generally these folks are towards the end of their rehabilitation assignment. Was a good meeting, and I think we learned a lot about what's going on up there. We still have some, some questions, but we appreciate the, the offer from the supervisor's office to keep us informed. And of course, they continued their pledge to make sure that we are aware of any further changes or proposals or plans for the facility and that we're at the table to discuss those before they go forward. So I think, I think the tour was appreciated by all. And the last thing for me is I'll be attending the Annual Conference League of California Cities in Long Beach later this week. That's it for me. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Bruce, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one question. So earlier tonight, we gave a, an award to the farmer's market for their 25th anniversary. I've been told that they've been trying to find out whether the diagonal parking spaces that are adjacent to Legacy Park are part of the park with the deed restrictions, or they're separate city property like the street itself for purposes of deciding whether there's the possibility of expanding into that space. Do you know offhand, does anyone here know offhand what the answer to that question is? Because they said they've been trying to get an answer, but they've been unable to so far.
I believe we've looked into that, and I see my Public Works Director is coming forward to give us an answer. I will say that they would need to modify their, the CUP would need to be modified.
Of course, but first thing we need to find out is whether the space even can be used.
So good evening, council members. That area is, half of it is in Legacy Park and half of it is in the roadway. It cuts the parking lot spaces to right in half. So half of it is, half of it's out.
So when you say half, you don't mean half the spaces, you mean half of each space?
It's, right, exactly.
Okay.
So to the south of the road, halfway through the parking space is Legacy Park, and the north half is the roadway.
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, just to put a fine point, do we know?
Bruce?
Council member, your microphone.
Sorry about that. Just to put a fine point, do you know how many feet from, between the road and the part that the city owns, which is broad, how many feet of that is not deed restricted?
Give me a quick second here. Good thing.
I have a follow-up question.
Any guess?
It's 10 feet.
10 feet?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
So my question, so on the other side of the street, are those parking places fully in the roadway, or do they belong partially to the county?
You're talking about the north side of Civic Center?
Yes.
Those are all within the public roadway.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Rob.
Anyone else? Sergeant?
First, I want to echo some of the sentiments that have been said about William. I was there that day at the crash. I arrived just after he had come back up to the roadway, and he was sweaty, covered in dirt, twigs, thorns, everything. So it takes a special person to go into the breach like that, so. We get paid, we get the training and the equipment, and he had none of that, so my hat's off to him. Oh, and the mayor wasn't joking, we are hiring as well as the fire department. When he's done in Germany, tell him to come on back. So I have the crunch statistics for the month of September. So in September, year-to-date, there's been 347 Part 1 crimes. This compares with 358 for the same time last year. That's a decrease of 3.2% year-over-year. So yet again, another month going in the right direction, downward trend, so that's nice to see. Our biggest crimes that we have are property crimes and theft, but there's been a marked reduction in that, so there's been 31 less. reduction in that, so there's been 31 less property crimes this year compared to the same time last year, so I'm happy to see that. Couple of notable incidents. On the ninth, so last week, last Wednesday, deputies responded to Malibu Fitness in the 2900 block of PCH for a transient who was disturbing the business. The transient, the suspect, he went inside the business, threw items around such as towels, hats, and other items, and he also took some of those items and exited the business. The victim, who was the employee confronted him and the suspect threatened him with a metal pole he was holding. He didn't physically threaten him, he verbally threatened him, but he was actually arrested for criminal threats. So the deputies responded swiftly and were able to take him into custody. The following day at Topanga Beach, which is just outside of the city limits, but it was notable since I was there for it, one of the local surfers was sitting in his car minding his own business when another transient armed with a golf club started bashing all his windows in on his car. The surfer got out and confronted him and the suspect produced a screwdriver and started stabbing the surfer. Fortunately, the screwdriver was pretty blunt and so the surfer wasn't significantly injured. I was the first one there and detained the suspect at gunpoint and got him into custody and he was arrested for assault with deadly weapon. Couple of other notable things, our real time crime center, which I saw you at, had its ribbon cutting ceremony not too long ago. And as Chief Smith talked about, it's a partnership between us and LA County Fire. And there is a video I was going to play, Parker, if you could play that, about the importance of this crime center and, and registering your cameras with us, so if we can watch this real quick.
Parker, you want to rewind that and let's, let's get the voice of the chaplain? I'll fill the dead air for a moment. Speaker is the chaplain for the Los Angeles sheriff on the western side of Lost Hill Station, but he's also an actor. He's, you've seen him in a lot of movies.
Yeah.
And I don't know which one he's doing part time now.
Do you have anything else to report?
I do have a few other things. If you have driven by Coastline Drive, in the past few days, you might have noticed the land side is free of RVs. So last Thursday, after the stabbing incident, I was, which I was on the way to Coastline, we did a cleanup with Caltrans. They brought dump trucks, street sweepers, we brought tow trucks, we brought hazmat teams, the board of supervisors, third district was out there, our homeless outreach team was out there, and we got rid of two dump trucks full of trash and debris from the side of the road, a dozen propane tanks, barbecues, burners, hundreds and hundreds of cigarette butts. So it was a fire waiting to happen there, so I'm glad we were able to clean that up before anything bad happened in that area.
He might mention that's in the county.
It is.
Not the city.
Right. But it all comes from that area, so stop it there. Also, for that area, coastal commission approved sign changes to include tow, tow away authority. And then yesterday, there was a fatal traffic accident at Topanga Canyon in PCH. A transient was walking in the lanes of traffic when she was hit by a motorcyclist and unfortunately passed away. Just again, another example of the dangers of PCH. So with that being said, this week is the one year anniversary of the Pepperdine students' tragic death, and so that's a reminder to everybody to slow down, put your phones away, put the distractions away and focus on the road and drive safely, so. Parker, any luck? All right, well, I'll do my best improvisation here. So you can register your camera with connectla county.org and basically it tells us that you have a camera. We can't see it, we can't look at the feed, we can't do anything to it, it just tells us that you have a camera. And if a crime occurs near where your camera is located, we can send you a message and say, hey, can you look at this time, this date and see if you see, you know, a red convertible or what, you know, a person matching description of a suspect? That's all it's there for. And if you have it, you can choose to give it to us or you don't want to if you don't have to. The other option is integrating your cameras. So integrating means we can pull up the feed from your camera and watch if a call happens, say at city hall here, the camera's here, if we get a call of somebody disturbing city hall here, we can pull up the cameras and watch what's going on in real time and give the deputies who are responding real time information about the situation as well as descriptions and any other pertinent information. So right now, there are 1,659 cameras that are registered and 461 that are integrated, so. Yeah.
If, if the camera is integrated, do you have 24/7 access or does the owner have to give you access on a specific basis?
The owner has to allow whatever access they want to give to us.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much and thank you for the RVs. It's been a long term issue, so thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Paul?
I understand we had a, a car club event up at stunt and, and ramp Saddle Peak yesterday that you had advance notice of. What happened?
So, yeah, the Malibu Auto Bonds called, they organized an event starting up at Saddle Peak and we got forewarning thanks to some kind community members and we were able to have four motor deputies and the traffic sergeant ready and waiting for them. They issued multiple citations and made sure there was no shenanigans going on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. That it? All right. Let's go to public comments. Remember my admonition at the start about keep on track and state of, state of the topics. First person up is Ranger Tim.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, respectful city council members. Good to see everybody again. I too want to echo Sergeant Sonderlin on, on your son's admirable works of mercy and how wonderful that is to take the initiative and make a difference in our society. Thank you very much. And also too, I'd like to give the report from last month, the coastal report. In the last month, a total of seven administrative citations were issued at Escondido Canyon Park and Luchusa Beach. Citations issued were for possession of alcohol, smoking, dogs on the beach, and illegal off trail use. Also, 467 parking citations were issued at all of our coastal parks. A special homeless outreach detail involving the Rangers was also implemented at Malibu Bluffs. There were two and a half weeks of extensive foot patrols of the area. One active encampment was found. A two day cleanup effort was assigned. The status of the encampment is now non-active and has been cleared. The homeless subject has not been located and are seen since the cleanup. Now, I just got a report about an hour before the meeting. We're going to have a detail with the LA County Deputy Outreach. Espinoza and I are going to go out to Malibu Bluffs because there's also another report of two new encampments. And we are having weather changes and so we want to keep on top of that. It's very important and so we're on top of that. And then also, we had extended fire patrols from our ranger division and fire division and have been signed due to the upcoming weather events and for fire prevention in our parks. And this concludes my ranger report for this month. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person up is Rob Blackman.
Thank you.
After Rob Blackman will be Candace Ferguson. One thing, one thing I'd ask is no clapping during the public comments, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Candace Ferguson. I live at 29500 Heather Cliff Road. I'm vice president of the Point Doom Club Residents Association. As you're aware of, the Malibu Point Doom Club has been sold to homeland America. I'm here on behalf of the residents asking you for your support. Reactivate Malibu Mobile Home Rents Park Rent Stabilization Commission. I have four potential candidates for your consideration. Dr. Rob Blackman, Zuma Jay, Bill Sampson, Kim Shank, Kevin Shankman. Thank you for your support and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Please, all right, Rob Blackman, then after, Mr. Blackman will be Drew Ann Jacobson, pardon me, Drew Ann Jackson.
No, Jacobson.
Jacobson. I can't read the writing, sorry.
No, thank you for all that you do for the city of Malibu. I really think my comment is obviated by the report that city manager McClary gave us. I was here asking your, your blessing to reactivate the Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Committee. It sounds like it's, it's going forward. The, the residents in, in the mobile home for years have earned, have developed the trust of a Miller family who for decades have run the Point Doom Club, but now the family operation is now owned by a more corporate entity, which by reputation is excellent. But I think having the commission there as a layer of protection would be prudent and very comforting to the residents of the mobile home park. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. All right. Drew Ann Jacobson and then after that, Michelle Shane.
Good evening, council members. I'm going to say the same thing that Candace and Rob both said. I'm a 60 year plus resident in Malibu, last 20 years in the mobile home park, and I just feel it's very important we get this stabilization up and running and as Mr. McClary said, you're going to deal with it on the 28th meeting, so I will come back and speak then. But just, just so you're all aware that I think this is unprecedented, neither mobile home parks ever been sold before. We're all a little weary and we hope you're all behind us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Michelle.
It's good to be back. So first off, sorry, I just lost, okay. I wanted to make a request. We're all cognizant and all aware of our four Pepperdine girls who lost their lives a year ago this Thursday and we have events around that. And Safer PCH, the group I'm part of, came up with an idea that October 17th should become a safe PCH day. And we would do that next year, obviously it's too soon to get it done for this year, have the city commemorated as a safe PCH day and we could do activities around that and in essence, create a memorial, a memory for those four girls. Unfortunately, we are going to have to add another white tire to the 61 tires that are up now because of the recent death. So it's ongoing, you guys are trying to do the best you can, it's all greatly appreciated. We're thrilled that the cameras are coming in and we're thrilled that there's movement and we're looking forward to more great things. But I wanted to bring that up, that maybe we could do that. We came with the idea and I remember when Emily died on Valentine's Day of 20, of 2011, they did a pass it forward day that the city commemorated and made it an Emily Day. So that's what made us think of it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, do we have any online speakers?
Four raised hands, first is Larry.
All right, Larry, go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Volume's a little light, can we turn it up? Go ahead.
Is that better?
We're working on it. That's good enough, I think. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, I would like to comment on the strategic work plan. Bruce Silverstein created a.
I think, excuse me, Larry, we're having a hard time hearing you. Can, is that as good as the volume is going to be?
We're not able to turn the volume up anymore if he can try moving closer to his microphone.
All right, Larry, did you hear that admission?
I did. Does this sound better?
We can hear you a little bit better. Go ahead, please.
Okay. So I do want to comment on the strategic work plan. Bruce Silverstein created a public Facebook page called COVID-19 memes.
Larry, let me interrupt you. You were talking about the strategic plan?
Yes, we'll get to that.
I believe that's off the agenda for tonight.
All right.
This is for items not on the agenda.
That's right, I'm sorry, recited was not on the agenda. I apologize for interrupting you. I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
Okay. People complained about the content and he publicly stated that he is proud of his posts and he's glad he did it. Anyone that doesn't like it, take a chill pill, he said. I've got some problems with all of this. It's disturbing that his Facebook page is public. It's visible to anyone on the internet, including children. When you see his posts, it's hard to understand what's funny about them. They're actually disturbing and again, visible to children. Here are a couple examples. There's a post of a woman's bed with a whip on it and dildos and butt plugs on the window sill. There's another post of two women that look drugged labeled Two Girls, One Cup. It says on the post, Google Two Girls, One Cup. Unfortunately, I did Google it and I'm sick to my stomach. Bruce refers to a disgusting vile fetish where one girl defecates in a cup and the other girl drinks it. But that's not all. There's a post showing a man with a mask on, but the mask has a real looking penis on the inside inferring the man has a penis in his mouth. The man happens to be Latino. There's also a half naked woman on the bed with no clothes on her lower body. Her legs are spread and her vagina is represented by the letter V in COVID. It's not blurred out, you see the vagina. There's a post showing an article about a mom titled Fighting Off Coronavirus By Drinking Sperm Smoothies. Sperm smoothies? There's another post showing braided pubic hair coming down a woman's shorts 47 days after the pandemic. There are racist posts against Mexicans and Chinese, not just women. There are posts knocking various religions. It's truly unbelievable. The fact that he believes this is funny, so it's so disturbing, the public available for any person on the internet to see, including children. I do wonder what the women listening or sitting in the council chamber think of this. I do wonder why anyone would shrug off this behavior. Bruce, you've offended so many people, but you shouldn't, you should be apologizing. Bruce, you've offended so many people, but you should be apologizing and entering some sort of counseling to deal with your issues. Some people think this is all a hoax."
Thank you. All right. Who's the next speaker?
Aaron.
All right. Aaron, go ahead, please.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. Go ahead, please.
Okay, yeah, this is for a comment on the adoption of the 2024 Emergency Operations Plan. So, you know, last week we heard from Hans that the city of Malibu was put on notice-
It's on the agenda. Excuse me. Aaron, this is on the agenda. You'll have to wait till that item comes up, please. Just bear with us. We'll be at that later on tonight. Who's next, please?
Bill Sampson.
Bill, go ahead, please.
Am I on?
You're on.
Am I on?
Yes, go ahead, please, Bill.
I am on?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. First, I thought Michelle had a great idea, so I'd like to support that. I hadn't heard it. Seems good to me. I don't know what would be wrong with it. Second, Larry, his name is Silverstein. You have a problem if you found it offensive and kept looking, but I'm not your therapist. More importantly, I was asked by Candace and a couple of other people simply to say, I support the efforts of the people in the Point Doom Club to, I don't know if it's recreate or re-staff the rent control committee. I wasn't sure I was going to be nominated for it. I guess I have enough to do, but I'd accept that Candace and Drew Ann and a bunch of other people up there have been my friends and classmates while our kids were growing up for years. But the important thing, it isn't me, it's them. This board or committee, I'm not sure what its official name is, should be done and try to give those folks some help. I think they may need it. I don't know. I haven't read the ordinance in quite a while. So please, help them out. They think this will help them. Do your job, help them. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Bill. Who's next, please?
Andy Lyon.
Andy, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please, Andy.
All right. Good evening, everybody. First, I'd like to say, respond to Larry. Larry, you're very detailed in your recounting of the memes. It seems you're studying them perfectly and over and over and over. So good on you. I'm here tonight to announce that I have started a write-in campaign to be on city council. I gathered signatures. It's an official write-in candidate, campaign. I'm not new to this. I've done it a few times, as you know. I felt it's important that I come in at this point because it seems that I need to support Steve and Bruce in doing what's right for Malibu, which was what we were trying to do in 2020. I just wanted to put that out there, so people would know. This is not some kind of like, oh, just write me in. It's an actual campaign. I went to the city. I went through the process of gathering signatures. I turned them in. I filled out papers. I'm not, you know, taking any funds. I'm not spending money. I'm going to do it that way, like I did the last time. And I just want to let everybody know that there are spots on the ballot below where you can write in my name, Andy Lyon, eight letters to help save Malibu. And one of the big reasons I'm doing this is because I don't like the way things have been run in the city. And, you know, I've been here my whole life, and we need, we need to have a little bit of a change. The days of Sharon Borowski running the city from behind the curtain needs to end. The days of these ex-mayors running a slate, if they're going to run a slate with another candidate, then we're going to come in, the three of us, and we're going to flop the majority vote that's been going on for so long. You guys complain about everything with Steve and Bruce, yet you've had the majority for the last four years. I'll get into it in more depth at, I'll be at the Malibu Association of Realtors debate, and I will be in that forum, and we'll go from there. And anybody who has any kind of questions for me, you can look at my past, you know, platforms and the people who've supported me. So look forward to supporting Steve and Bruce, and I look forward to everybody, you know, writing my name in. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Who's next, please?
Fred.
Fred? Fred, go ahead, please.
Fred, can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Hi, great. Yeah, thanks. I just want to talk about a recent ruling that just happened right on Hans's site, that the Malibu Township Council lost and has been ordered to pay the city's legal fees for a case they dragged out for 12 years. They're losing legal wrangling. They lose all of them, actually. Costs taxpayers tons of money and staff time for over a decade. I don't know how much these legal fees are, but I heard they may try to ask the city to waive the penalty. I'm sure they will because this would likely wipe them out financially. Strongly encourage you not to let them off the hook. This once great group, now debase and degraded into a no, just to a no-growth, extreme, NIMBY, pay-to-play lobbying organization led by Joe Drummond, Steve, John, Mazza, now spends their time peeking over neighbors' fences, crying wolf, developer, developer, at normal residents who just want to make improvements on their homes. Rebuild. Build an ATU for their grandma, a pool. Don't reward them for wasting our time and tax dollars in goodwill. They're not the group they used to be or brag about being. The people are sick of it. Their president was even advised by lawyers that even testifying in front of this council or planning commission was a conflict of interest. They've lost their way. Don't reward them for their tireless, cynical efforts to grind the city to a halt and make residents and the staff of Malibu targets and miserable. The worst part is that they always lose. They lose on appeal, in court, at the coastal commission. The only thing they've succeeded in doing is clogging up city resources, overworking staff with nonsense, non-issues, and make anything the residents want to do with their own properties take forever and ever. They're not defending Malibu. They're choking the life out of it, harassing neighbors. Make them pay their bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Ann Donine.
Ann Donine, please go ahead. Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, please.
Good. Hi. As the final stretch of Malibu City Council's race looms before us, residents are witnessing some of the most desperate and discouraging political behavior ever. As a property owner and resident born here in 1947, I find this embarrassing and disheartening. True Malibu champions have always been creatives, academics, and independent thinkers. As inherent leaders with character and ethics, they've served on voluntary public agencies, commissions, educational and civic groups to ensure that Malibu's precious mission statement will perpetually thrive. Many of these leaders have become volunteers for Malibu Township Council, an organization that historically has supported Malibu's mission and vision statements to protect the unspoiled natural beauty and character of the area, even though that might require some personal sacrifice among residents. But at some recent candidates' meet and greets, and even these here, the city council public comment session that you've just heard, you've seen Malibu's flipside. This should be completely embarrassing to anyone who lives here. Mud-slinging vulgarities and lies, lies, lies. The desperate techniques of shady strivers. But sometimes such claims make their way to social media also. They become rumors, and so they are dangerous. Former MTC President John Mazza and MTC's current president, Joty Drummond, are among the targets of these slanderous slurs that you've just heard. Why? They and MTC are the good guys. They don't just go out on a limb for Malibu. They practically live on that limb to protect this land and to protect us residents from the hassles and dangers of L.A.'s crowded metropolis. John, Joe, and the MTC do not deserve to be scapegoats of political candidates who are too close to developers. These are the developers known for consistently demanding scores of city COVID variances. They want 60-foot retaining walls in Slidphone Bluffs, elevators to hoist cars to fourth-floor parking lots. They will pretend that blue line streams don't even exist. These actions, of course, mean more cars, parking lots, PCH accidents, and even dead sea lions, and now, of course, even a dead historic kelp forest just offshore. Since 1947, MTC members have been helping city and county residents make their way through often confusing local laws. So ask yourself, why the slimy attacks on a whole group of helpers? MTC members are the good guys.
That's your time. Thank you very much. Who's next?
Joe Drummond.
Joe, go ahead, please.
Well, I think it's absolutely absurd and disgusting that with all of Malibu's public safety concerns with wildfire and PCH that our fire chief and Captain Sutherland just talked about, most importantly, tonight, and with the anniversary of four Pepperdine girls, that these faceless, fictitious named peoples are making these smear campaigns against MTC and Bruce Silverstein. Finally, also, as the only person of color on any city commission in Malibu and one of three out of five majority of female commissioners appointed by council member Silverstein, who has also been recently egregiously slandered, I take exception to all this effort by the wealthy, white people, developers, and Versanti supporters to try and ironically drive me out of town and try and call Bruce misogynist when he is the one who has the most female commissioners of anyone, while Versanti has only zero. How about that? This constitutes a prima facie violation of my civil rights, as I said before, and as this, as Ann Donine just said, we are the good guys here. Speaking of the good guys, in the end, despite losing a few battles in court, Malibu Township Council won the war in 2018, following a city council majority booster of a secretly negotiated swap of hundreds of acres of parklands that would have created another dangerous intersection on PCH just west of Malibu Canyon Road. On top of fire hazardous overnight camping in the Ensignal Canyon area, these council members termed out, and a new city council agreed to put an end to their backroom deal. By defeating the swap, MTC's lawsuits stalled and protected Malibu residents' homes from overnight camping at Charmley Park. By eliminating the extreme fire danger, the illegal swap would have put our families at risk with this overnight camping high up in Dry Chaparral in the location of paths of oncoming wildland fires. As for phase two of MTC's lawsuits in 2019, the city lost summary adjudication on MTC's claim that the city council unlawfully failed to announce closed-session agendas in council chambers before going into closed session. That interim MTC victory was the catalyst for an important change expressly acknowledged by the Court of Appeal. Ever since, the council now properly opens its meetings and opens session in council chambers, publicly announcing closed-session items before recessing into closed session. This affords the public an opportunity to comment on these items, an opportunity the citizens of Malibu had been denied years before. MTC is proud of its work for enforcing California's marquee public accountability law and will continue to do whatever and so whenever transparency and openness to take a backseat to secrecy and backroom deals. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Who's next?
Those are all the raised hands.
All right. That's all the raised hands. Time to come up to the council members. Any want to go first? Volunteers? Bruce?
I'll be happy to go first. First of all, I want to thank everybody that has contributed their comments, even the comments with which I don't agree. I think everybody has the right to call in or come here and speak their piece, just as Doug said at the beginning, and exercise your First Amendment rights. With respect to the Point Doom Club, well, actually, both Mobile Home Parks, as has been reported, we're going to reactivate the commission. I would encourage the residents of both parks to actually maybe form a petition of some sort and present us with what their view is collectively of who they'd like to see on the commissions, and we can take that into consideration. I suspect it will be treated very favorably. We were given a list of names tonight, but that was just by a couple people. It would be great to see collectively what you're interested in. I like Michelle's idea about Safe PCH Day, so is that something we want to have consensus to bring back to discuss?
I would second.
I think so. Yeah.
Okay. That seemed like an easy one. And also, I wanted to say, today was our first day where we started the meeting at 5:30 opposed to 6:30, so we could get some of the consent calendar and some of the more administrative things out of the way early. And I think that so far, it's proved good because we're at the same time right now we would normally be if we started at 6:30 to get through public comment, but we've already spent an hour doing the other thing, so that'll be one less hour that we've shaved off. So I think that's really, that was a good thing we did there. I want to ask for another consensus, which is, today is Columbus Day. It's widely known as Columbus Day. It's not a holiday in Malibu, and that's fine with me. I'm not suggesting it should be, but I know it's a holiday in many other places. But there is a movement in many jurisdictions to designate today Indigenous People's Day. And I'd like to agendize, coming back, not to create necessarily a day off, but actually just designate today Chumash and Other Indigenous Peoples' Day in Malibu. So I wonder if we could get a consensus to put that on the agenda as well. It should be an easy item to discuss, I would think.
I would support that. I would add that it may be more than just a Chumash. I think there's other tribes that are in this respective area. All right? Okay with that?
I'd be.
All right.
Okay, great. The last one, I'm going to just, I'm going to be a little bit, and I'm sorry I have to do this, but, you know, we get these calls week after week by these anonymous people on Facebook who I suspect are not from Malibu. They're outsiders. Tonight, we heard from Larry. I was surprised we didn't hear from Mel and Curly. I want to talk about this Facebook group because it's garnered such attention. And Winston Churchill said, "You have enemies. Good for you. You've done something." On May 14 of 2020, I posted the following, and this is four years ago, in that group because some people were concerned about some of the memes. By the way, there are 3,500 memes posted there, and Lowry tonight selected 10 maybe at most. There are 3,400-plus that are not deemed offensive by most people. They're actually, they're very humorous. I encourage everyone out here, not kids, obviously, but to join COVID-19 memes. Take a look at it. You'll see. It's actually pretty humorous for the most part. But what I wrote that day was the following, before there was any controversy here. "Political memes and other controversial subjects, including pro-Trump, anti-Trump, reopening protests, claims of the WHO, 5G, Bill Gates, other conspiracies, claims of exaggerated death tolls and minimized death tolls, et cetera. In addition to hopefully providing entertainment to many members of this group, a key purpose of this group is to create a historical record of the breadth and nature of comedic response to the COVID-19 crisis. That response naturally includes politically centric, as well as memes that are potentially offensive to some group members for all sorts of other reasons." I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the purpose of this group was to create a historical record for the world to see what the comedic response was to a deadly pandemic. And it gave a lot of people a humorous respite from the despair. Rowan Atkinson said, "Comedy should be a means of exposing and ridiculing the follies, foibles, and failings of mankind. That's what it's for. It should have no taboos. The job of comedy is to offend. There's no offense when there's probably little, if there's no offense, there's probably little true comedy. Mature adults understand these things. People who don't have an agenda understand these things." Ricky Gervais, "I often hear the question, is there any-" Ricky Gervais, "I often hear the question, 'Is there anything you shouldn't joke about?' As I always say, 'No, there's nothing you shouldn't joke about.' It depends on what the joke is. Comedy comes from a good or bad place, and when I hear someone say, 'Oh, he overstepped the mark,' I always think, 'Well, who drew the mark?'" And just because someone's offended, it doesn't mean they're right. Another comedian, Stephen Fry, "It's a curious time. We live in an age where people feel the need to be offended on behalf of others. It's as if excitement of being offended has trumped the importance of free expression." And again, I encourage people to express themselves freely. I'm glad people have called in, no matter how much I disagree with what they have to say. Humor should be about challenging norms and questioning authority, not just playing it safe. When we limit the things we can joke about, we limit the scope of our thoughts. It's a very British thing. This is a British comedian. And we're in danger of losing something very special if we keep narrowing the boundaries of what's considered acceptable." One last comedian quote, well, I have a few more, but one more long one. George Carlin. We all love George Carlin, and George Carlin was deemed very offensive in his time, at least by those who didn't appreciate and weren't mature. "Political correctness is America's newest form of intolerance. It's especially pernicious because it comes disguised as tolerance. It presents itself as fairness, yet attempts to restrict and control people's language with strict codes and rigid rules. I'm not sure that's the way to fight discrimination. I'm not sure silencing people or forcing them to alter their speech is the best method of solving problems. Those problems go much deeper than speech." And one last quote from Ricky Gervais, I'm sorry. "I found a great greeting card also. You find it offensive? I find it funny. That's why I'm happier than you." And the last quote I'll give, and this is directed specifically to Larry, "Remember, when you're dead, you do not know you're dead. It's only painful for others. The same applies when you're stupid. If I've offended anybody, I apologize. The intent is not to offend. The intent is to awaken. Freedom of speech is important. Humor is important, and we all have that right, and we should freely express it. People who seek to shut down speech are the problem, not those who speak up and offend." Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Bruce. Who's next?
Paul.
Steve.
I'm going to introduce myself.
It's like when my mother used to...
I put a little picture in front of my knee, my mother.
It's like the mother goes down all the kids' names until she finds the one she wants. I'm sorry.
Okay. I want to again thank all the speakers. You know, just to Larry, again, and I sort of agree with Andy's comment, Larry spent a whole bunch, way too much time looking at those pictures. But, you know, I said it last week or last meeting, I'll say it again. You know, these anonymous quotes or anonymous insults are developed by losers, delivered by fools, and believed by idiots. So I just hope the residents out there are not idiots. All right, I want to thank Kene Gibbs, who, I'm sorry, is gone. He got a write-up, a well-deserved write-up in the Malibu Times last week for the work he was doing with the Malibu Community Brigade. Basically, they are training locals to assist and protect the rest of us in an emergency, so I wanted to thank him and I encourage him to continue that. It's good to have residents stand up and do something that's really beneficial for the city, and he's done exactly that. And I know I've asked for this before. Planning Department has changed what they're doing for staff reports. At some point, we just get a little write-up so we know what the hell that is. I sure would appreciate that.
We are in the final steps of putting that memo out, so you'll get that this week.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Sorry about the delay.
Okay. Home insurance. And I know we talked, when the gentleman were doing the fire piece, and I know that if you come one of these firewise communities, you can get a discount for your, on Cal Fire, for your insurance. But this insurance stuff is, I mean, about a month ago, a little over a month ago, I started getting calls from residents complaining about the fact that they were losing insurance and the cost of getting new insurance is outrageous. I'm now getting calls from residents saying they have to move. I mean, they can't afford to cover the insurance costs with some of these things that are going on, so I'm not sure what we can do about it. I mean, we've got some lobbyist people up in Sacramento, maybe they can help. I know there are people way, you know, a lot higher up on the food chain than I am trying to work on that, but boy, this is going to be a problem, not only for Malibu but for a lot of other cities, so if anybody's got some good ideas, I sure like to hear them. And I'll let it go at that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Marianne or Paul?
Marianne.
May I ask Ranger Ten a question?
Go right ahead. Step up. What'd you get for staying late?
Thank you for the efforts on the homeless encampments and such.
You're welcome.
Does the MRCI have any plans for brush clearance or any other fire protections on any other properties they manage?
Yes, actually, we do. We have our fire division that's doing brush clearance right now, and then we also subcontracted out to a company in Malibu that's also brushing around our parks like Ramirez, Escondido, and I believe Crowd Canyon. We just did a big project in Ramirez Canyon, brushing all the way up. And then we're, actually, next week, we're doing another project where we're going to go almost up to Canaan Road, brush clearance.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I wanted to give a big thank you to staff. You guys have been raising up a lot of big projects recently and a lot of effort on those, so I just want to make sure we say thank you for all the work that staff's doing. It's not going unnoticed, and I just want to make sure that you are acknowledged. I also wanted to thank Supervisor Horvath's office for the tour of Camp Kilpatrick. It was great to see the camp. I'm going to let Doug talk a little bit more about it, but they're doing some really good work there, and they can be proud of that program that they've got going there, and hopefully they can duplicate it in other areas. One of the things, I attended a JPIA conference on risk management last week, and it was very informative and very enlightening, the programs that they have for the cities and our other communities to make sure that people are informed and we have proper procedures in place to make sure that we're staying safe in our communities and our employees and that everything is being managed to reduce our risk. I also attended a Public Safety Commission meeting, and one of the subjects came up was the tow yard, trying to find a year-round location. And I was hoping that we can have that agendized as quickly as possible so the council can have a discussion about trying to find a year-round location, not just the temporary facility for the summer, and whether that's incorporated in some of our vacant lands in the near term. I would just hope that we can have that discussion here at the dice.
Can we put that? Go ahead.
Staff is working on that, and we are planning to bring an item to the council. I don't have a date on it yet, but that's our plan.
Okay, if we could have that as quickly as possible. I think it's really important with the fire season coming up and just to be prepared for next year. So that's what I would encourage. So thank you very much.
Paul?
I just want to report that during the last three weeks, when we didn't have a city council meeting, in case you thought we'd forgotten to do our job, the city has been very diligent in setting special meetings for us. And we have spent quite a few hours here on several days, and we are steadfastly trying to move the work of the city forward. And I want to thank all the members of the staff for scheduling all of that for us and making those meetings happen and presenting us with all the supporting materials as well. Thank you.
Anything else, Paul?
That's it.
And just to follow up on Paul's comment, with all these meetings, my wife came up to me the other day and says, you know, you're not even, with all these meetings you're going to, you're not even getting paid minimum wage. You should go to McDonald's and start slinging hamburgers. Probably make more money there, so.
Dropping fries for 20 bucks.
I'm sorry, the one thing I forgot, this Saturday, the 19th, Malibu Mesudiths is having their annual pie festival, so I encourage everybody to come out. It's at their location on Morning View Drive. I'm sure you can find information about it on, in the Malibu Times and other websites and such, but it's always a great event, raises money, and you get to purchase great pieces of pie to enjoy, so I encourage everybody to attend.
Go ahead, Paul.
I'd just like to fill in, I think that starts at about 11 o'clock, and the actual judging takes place between 12:15 and 2:00, and there is entertainment as well, and it's always a wonderful thing, and there is a lot of different kinds of pie to buy or taste.
I would add that the council members are usually invited as judges, which is really hard duty. It's a difficult, it's a difficult job. What is it, 10 samples or so? Yes. Now you know why they get a plug on the council meeting. All right. Talking about my activities, I had an A&amp;F meeting on the 26th, and we had a staff ice cream social afterwards. Appreciate all the department heads that dished out ice cream. I appreciate my four servants. The 27th, I was at the ribbon-cutting ceremony at Lost Hills for the real-time crime watch opening. And I would like to stress that while Malibu doesn't have a lot of cameras in place yet, our traffic synchronization program and the automated license plate readers and so forth are going to be online sooner rather than later, and that'll be a nice addition and fill in some of the blanks on PCH. Mentioned the Camp Kilpatrick tour with Supervisor Horvath and some of the leadership in the probation department. As Marianne mentioned, there's 20 residents there. This is not the camp that we were as worried about a few years ago. The residents there are chosen to be in that program, as one of them told us, said, "We don't want to do anything to screw this up. It's an opportunity to actually have a transition out of the juvenile hall system." And I think several of them are actually going to college online, and some of them have graduated and been scholarship to places like Arizona State. So very proud of the performance, and it's quite an improvement, and I wish them best luck over there. October 4th, Business Roundtable. And then on the 7th, I attended the remembrance ceremony at Calabasas City Hall for the event in Israel. I believe some of the other council, Paul was there, and we also had council members from all the other cog cities. It was a very moving event. Safe Day, Safe PCH Day on October 17th. Michelle has left, but I fully endorse that idea myself. On Keegan's Brigades, I want to stress, I've been a supporter for that ever since the idea first came up. We originally called it Firefront Following, and now it's the Brigades. But what it's really designed to do is to have trained volunteer individuals who are properly equipped to be able to come behind the fire front if there's a fire, they do other things as well, and save the homes. And most people don't realize that fires don't burn the house down and they use a wall of flames. It's the embers that get you later, and that's what this is designed to do. And we made a terrible error in the Woolsey Fire. We actually trained people to stay behind, not by design but by accident. People said, gee, the only way I'm going to save my house is to stay. Well, these brigades are an attempt to make sure that you don't have to stay and encourage people to leave when they're asked or told to. So it's a very good step, and the city, as you may remember, we put $100,000 towards the training program, and every one of those volunteers, it takes about $2,000 worth of equipment. They don't get paid, but in order to equip them up, it's about $2,000 worth of gear. Mobile Home Commission, it's a commission, not a committee, and as I understand it, each council member will be making an appointment to the commission, and the usual process for commissions is that there is an application for anyone who wants to join and look forward to that process taking place. On insurance, I was with Jackie Irwin on Sunday, and we were talking about insurance. It came up in the conversation, and it's a very big concern in Sacramento. The California Fair Plan is, only has about $2 billion of reserves. Sounds like a lot of money, but if you think about the Woolsey Fire just in Malibu, we probably went through somewhere around half a million to over a billion dollars just in fire, fire claims for the 480 homes that were lost. So it doesn't take long to burn through that. If you look at Florida and the hurricanes that are down there, you can see what could happen to their program, which was set up similar to Cal Fair to try and provide insurance as a last resort. It's a nationwide problem, and there's some steps being taken in Sacramento. I don't know if it's going to fix it or not, but for a long time, we had the lowest insurance rates in the country, and now we don't have insurance. So it's an issue that is going to have to be dealt with in the Sacramento area as well as nationally. That's all the comments I had. We're about to go into new business.
May I just make one comment to follow up on Camp Kilpatrick? So just to give people some perspective, when we first learned about that, probably close to four years ago, three or four years ago, and what we did was we formed an ad hoc committee, which was then Karen Farrar and myself, Farrar, Farrar, sorry. And then when Karen left council, I believe it was Paul and me. And we had a lot of discussions with Supervisor Horvath. What is there now is not what was going to be there. And, you know, so just so the community understands, your city council actually helped transform what was going to be a much more dangerous situation to the one you described and witnessed. So, you know, we get, we, people say this is a thankless job. It generally is a thankless job, but just to understand, we actually did something to make the community safer.
All right, we have quiet successes and very loud failures, so that's the way it works. All right, does anybody want to take a break, or you want to keep going?
A short break would be good.
All right, let's take a five-minute break. Let's come back at, let's make it 8:25.
Seven minutes, you're so generous.
Seven minutes, it's all the way.
A break would be good.
All right, let's take a five minute break. Let's come back at, let's make it eight 25.
Seven minutes, you're so generous.
Seven minutes, it's all the way. To Mary Ann. Okay, we ready? All right, city council meeting is back in session. The next item up is code of conduct. I believe that's Assistant City Manager Joe Tony. Oh, and Deputy City Manager too.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. In front of you today is consideration of a code of conduct. So as is today's new agenda order that came out of our strategic plan and one of our top priorities of making the city of Malibu a top workplace culture. And we re-agendized or reordered our agenda as part of that effort. And that came out of the policy ad hoc. We have also taken one of those strategic work plan items in that area of focus to review and establish a code of conduct. And this is one of those sub projects in that priority area. A code of conduct is akin to a code of ethics and establishes values, guidance for all council, commission and staff for their behavior and treatment of others. The policy ad hoc consisting of Mayor Stewart and Councilmember Silverstein were assigned the task of crafting the code and they worked with staff to present the draft that is in front of you today. So the purpose of the code is to ensure respect and open dialogue in the course of city business. It is to foster ethical and accountable governance and further encouraging transparency and civic engagement by creating a welcoming environment. So ethics, ethics is knowing the difference between what you have a right to do and what is right to do. I'm going to read that again. Ethics is knowing the difference between what you have a right to do and what is right to do. That is a quote from Potter Stewart, Associate Justice of the U.S. Supreme Court. Previous Associate Justice. And I'm taking this as a page from recent ICMA leadership training and effective supervisory practices that many of our staff have attended. And so they provided that quote, which I thought was quite appropriate for today's discussion. So ethics is defined as the standard of professional and personal behavior based on shared values. It's commitment to the highest set of standards, not the lowest common denominator. The results are accountability for professional and personal conduct, awareness of current standards and regulations and authenticity to do the right thing, even when no one is looking. So I'm not going to read all of our sections of the code, but wanted to take some snippets of preamble and also some of the sections in the code, just to try to give you the tenor of it. The code of conduct for officials is intended to promote mutual respect, civility and orderly conduct between and among officials, city employees, Malibu residents and other members of the public in order to ensure that civic engagement and local democracy flourish in Malibu. The code establishes that the city council believes that Malibu's residents and other members of the public are entitled to fair, transparent, accountable and ethical local government and that the effective functioning of democratic government is best served if public officials, both elected and appointed, comply with the laws and policies affecting the operations of government. Public officials are independent, impartial and fair in their judgment and actions. That public office is used for the public good and not for personal gain. And public deliberations and processes are conducted openly unless legally confidential in an atmosphere of respect and civility that allows for and encourages differing differing points of view. And a common theme throughout this document that you'll see is respect. So some of the highlights I want to touch on, and there's a lot of sections to the code. All of them are important, but a few that pop out are some of the features that we want to touch on. The conduct of city officials is number three, that professional and personal conduct above reproach, refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges or verbal attacks. Number four is respect for the process. And again, I'm not reading these verbatim, these are just snippets, but respect for the process to perform our official duties in accordance with the processes and rules of order. Number five is the conduct at public meetings where we're expected to prepare for public issues, listen courteously and attentively and focus on the business at hand. Refrain from interrupting personal comments that are not germane, speaking privately with one another or otherwise interfering with the orderly conduct. And that is to avoid debate and argument with members of the public and practice civility and decorum. And then number eight touches on communication and this is mostly tied to the Brown Act. But again, communication that we disclose substantive information and we comply with Brown Act when using social media and that. There's additional information in the code, but an example would be commenting on a post where an official has an item or policy discussion in front of them that could create a circular meeting or you could see the majority of votes if other council members are also reading and posting on that post as well. Number 15 talks about the separation of duties where the council is responsible for policies and the city manager and all staff under the city manager are responsible for the administrative duties. So number 15 is where we adhere to the council manager form of government. That's where city officials are expected to stay in their respective lanes of authority and responsibility. And city council members are expected to refrain from disrupting city staff from conducting their job, from involvement in administrative functions or from attending meetings of city staff unless they are invited. Number 17 touches on positive workplace environment where individual officials who lack the authority to direct the activities of the city manager, city attorney, treasurer, city employees and all, all officials are encouraged to support a positive and constructive workplace environment for city employees. And then the implementation and compliance of this is that this will be reviewed at regular orientations and procedures meetings on an annual basis and that officials have primary responsibility of ensuring ethical standards. That means our, we ourselves are meant to enforce this and enforce each other, hold each other accountable. And the enforcement of this as laid out in the code is meant to be corrective rather than penal. So there is somewhat of a stepwise procedure there with reporting. But ultimately, again, it's up to the legislative body to regulate themselves. And with that, the recommendation is to adopt resolution 24 dash 52, your code of ethics, or code of conduct, I should say.
Any quick questions? If they're not, then let's go to public comments. Do we have any speaker slips?
We don't have any speaker slips for this item and we're checking Zoom. But no, we don't have any raised hands on Zoom for this item.
Okay, all right, bring it up here to the council. Any council comments or questions? All right, go ahead.
After I read this a couple of times, I struggled to try and figure out what problem we're trying to solve. And at least my takeaway was in some cases, this document is dealing with the symptom and not the problem. A lot of the concerns that we had, okay, I think revolve around discussions of the work product we're getting from the planning department, I think for the most part. I mean, I've been in meetings with building safety, had no concerns there. I've been in public works meetings, no, no concerns there. I've been in public safety meetings, none of those there. So primarily comes back to, to, to questions or comments made about some of the planning product we got out of that department. And let's look at an example, the Malibu motel project. The staff report we received was bad, just bad. At least 20 areas are defined by the M T C in an appeal. It ignored many of the rules of our municipal government and the rules of our L C P. Now I believe when we receive something like that, it's part of our responsibility is to point out that it's wrong and try and get it corrected. Now, now, after that May 13th meeting, the mayor, you, Mary Ann and Paul all accused me of being abusive. I got whatever the right word is, abusive was the word you used to the staff at that meeting. Trying to figure out what I did that you guys thought was wrong. Can you tell me that?
I don't think we want to get into that for, on this topic because I, I think you've got your opinion. Let's put your opinion on the table.
Well, I think here's the deal, you're going to ask me to sign this and you're going to ask other people to sign this. I wanted to know what it means because I don't understand what you think is is wrong conduct. How am I going to fix it? So you wrote, you had some idea when you put this together. I'm just trying to figure out what that is.
Mayor, Members of the Council might be able to help. This was initiated out of our strategic work plan in 2023. So this predated any sort of staff report that came this, this year.
Yes, nothing to do with it. I appreciate that conduct, but that's not in relationship to the question I asked. I mean, Paul went out of the way, he wrote a letter to the Malibu Times. So I said, what, what do you think was wrong? You gotta have an opinion because if we don't, if we can't explain it, how are we going to fix it?
Well,
Go ahead, Mary Ann.
I think what I would have to say is that I think it's the tone that instead of questioning the process and the way that things are presented to the various reviewing bodies, whether it's the planning commission or the city council, it's intend, it's attacking of staff of why something is put before a particular body. And for me, that's, you know, the basic thing. The motel, the motel project was brought forward because one, staff felt that it was complete and the applicant wanted their hearing. And that is the law, they are entitled to have their hearing. Now, we can disagree with what's presented in the staff report without attacking the staff for presenting the information. And I think that what the case is many times is that we are personally attacking staff members and/or the department because items are brought forward, even though those items are legally entitled to have their day before the approving body and be heard.
Well, here's what I'm trying to figure, here's what I'm trying to figure out. I've had four years on the planning commission and four years on the city council. Eight years of my life were on video. And in none of those eight years, has anybody ever accused me of being nasty to staff. And it wasn't until this motel project came up where that you made that comment, then Doug made the comment and Paul wrote the letter. So I'm just trying to understand again, from your perspective, what is wrong?
Okay, I'm, I'm going to take a turn at this. First off, this is not about trying to justify or use your example of the motel. This is not about a hearing on the conduct at the motel project. It's about this process for the city having a code of conduct that applies to everything we do. This will long survive way past the motel project. There's no telling when we will have another event like that. Hopefully we never do. But this is not about who did what or not at the motel hearing. What we have here, and by the way, I will mention that Councilmember Silverstein and myself, as well as the staff drew from many other cities as well as the standard for the J P I A and League of Cities to put this together. This is, this is a, this is a composite of what we thought were best practices of all places. It's not about trying to solve a problem that occurred at the planning commission or at the city council meeting. It's about a process that we want to have going forward for the entire city. Now, one of the examples of the process we don't want to have occur is what if I was in my business life would be referred to as harassment. And that's one of the things we're trying to avoid in this. So let's not focus on a particular incident, but let's get back to what is the process we want to have going forward. We're not going to change history. And one of my lines you hear me say all the time is you can't change history, you can only change the future. So what we want to do is have a standard in place for the code of conduct of how we want to have the city council, the staff and the commissions work together with staff as well as their obligations to the community. That's what this code of conduct is about. It's seven pages of what we ought to be doing in our official role, not trying to rehash what happened at the motel.
I'm not trying to go back and rehash what, I know what happened at the motel. What I'm, what I'm, but what I'm trying to do is at least, you want me to sign this? At the end, at the end, if there's some documents, I gotta sign this.
No, you don't, you don't have to sign it.
But you'd like me to sign it.
We'd like you to sign it, you're an elected official.
And I'd like, like to make sure I understand what I'm signing. Okay, so and, and like I said, look, you questioned my actions. I'm just trying to understand what you thought was wrong that caused you to question my actions. I don't understand that, I can't fix it.
I'm not going to get into that in a public forum here. I'd be glad to have a private discussion with you about that.
This is a public document.
That's got nothing to do with your performance on it. This is, this is about the code of conduct to be assessed by the city council to apply to the city staff as well as all the elected and commission members. This is not about how I feel about your personal conduct.
Doesn't have, make, don't make it my personal conduct. What conduct that you see occur at that meeting that causes you to have a problem with this thing?
I think when you look at the tape on it from an objective point of view, you see conduct that is not supported by this code of conduct.
Such as?
Harassment.
What is harassment?
Councilmembers, I would recommend we not discuss this particular meeting, which is actually the subject of, related to. which is actually the subject of, related to a claim against the city and other issues.
Look, I mean, I'm trying to work with you guys, right? I understand, I don't have a problem with the code of conduct. I just think it's right for us to understand what you think the code is going to result in when we do it. I just need, there's no examples, there's no harassment. Is asking them a question harassment?
All right. I understand your point. Let's move on to other people. Bruce, go ahead.
Well, you know, that last question was a fair question. I'm sorry, I'm really sick of talking about the motel. With all due respect, Steve, this has nothing to do with anything you did, or I did, or anyone else here did. This is a generic concept. It was put on our work plan before the motel project, and it's something that actually, initially, I believe Jefferson and Karen were going to try to do, and then Paul and Karen made a stab at it, and we had a special meeting, and there were two hours of complaints from the public about what was put in the proposed document, and now
That was the policy.
And now Doug and I have made another attempt at it, and I was really pleased to see, other than two letters, I think we got, there's no one here complaining about it this time. So this is a generic code of conduct. Most cities, I'm not going to say every city, but most cities have this. It's pretty common fare. As a lawyer, every state has what's called a Rules of Professional Conduct or a Code of Professional Conduct. They call it differently in some places, but it's very much like this. It's a set of, there are some, it's guidelines, it's not rules, it's guidelines, and it helps people conduct themselves. And it's not, if you do something that's inconsistent with it, you're not violating a rule, you're just doing something that's inconsistent with what the suggestion of your conduct is. And it's legitimate question to ask, like, what's harassment? I'm not sure where that is in here specifically, but let me say, when we first were presented with some drafts from other jurisdictions, the staff did a great job of culling through other cities and finding examples that might work here. You know, I took pen to paper, I substantially went through it. My goal was to make sure that there was absolutely nothing in here that was dictating activity which was legally permissible, no restriction on any legally permissible activity, and no mandate that anybody do anything. That all this does, to the extent that there are any mandates at all, is it summarizes some codes, state codes, that we have to live by anyway. But otherwise, it's all, what is the word? It's a goal, it's not a requirement. So I went through this, and Doug and I had a lot of debates, and the staff, and we debated, and we made sure as best we could, and we can do it more here now, if you think there's anything in here that goes beyond what my objective was. But my objective was to make sure that nobody was being told that they couldn't do something that they had a legal right to do, but that this was just setting forth the way we would hope we would conduct ourselves, and that our commissioners would conduct themselves, and the staff, well, this is applied to staff. They have their own code of conduct, I believe, that they are bound by. By the way, this is aspirational, that's the word I was looking for. This is aspirational, and the city employees actually have a code that they are, it's part of their employment contract, so to speak. So I would encourage everyone here, if they haven't done it already, to just fly speck it, and if there's a sentence in it or a word in it that's problematic, because that's what Doug and I did for months, if there's a word in it or a sentence in it or a paragraph that you find problematic, that you don't understand, identify what it is, let's see if we can work through it. But it's not intended to address any specific person's specific conduct. It is a generic document, and as Doug said, or maybe Mary Ann, it's going to last for ages until it gets amended by another city council. It's not for us, it's for all city councils, it's for all commissions, and it's something that we are long overdue in creating. And the object was to make sure it wasn't personal, and it wasn't prohibitive of people's expression of free speech, and it would help conduct business in an orderly manner. So for all those reasons, I support it. But I mean, clearly Doug and I support it because we went through many meetings where we got to this point, so we're actually looking for at least one more person that agrees with us.
And let me just say one thing. This is about the best practices from other cities, and one of the things it did, it highlighted, as you look through the various sections, what needs to be addressed, and I'm just gradually reading some of these, compliance with the law, conduct to city officials, respect for the process, conduct at public meetings. This is a roadmap of guardrails that the elected officials and the commissioners and anyone else that's affected by this has to say, this is what is expected of me to do my job. Bruce is absolutely correct. We tried to make sure we didn't break anybody's rights, just as I read the statement at the start of the public comments. We're trying to respect everyone's right to do things. On the other hand, we do want to make sure that we follow good protocol. I love the Potter Stewart comment that was up there, by the way, no relation to me. And by the way, that's not his most famous quote, if you know the most famous quote. It's just meant to be a roadmap, and it's not personal, it's to deal with things that we see as being best practices, and that's how I'd like to present it.
I had one more point, and then Paul, I'm sorry. Also, when we went through the codes from other cities and even the original draft, I identified multiple provisions that other cities have in their codes, which I actually think are restrictive of people's rights. They had misinterpretations of the Brown Act in some of them that went beyond what the law is. They had rules about conduct that were not the law, but they took what was aspirational and made it mandatory, and we went out of our way to make sure that we weren't doing that, that we were only setting forth goals where there's no law that applies, we're summarizing the law that applies and not going beyond the law.
Paul, go ahead.
About three years ago, when Karen and I were taking a shot at this, what we did was go through the existing protocols that had been adopted by various councils over the years, and basically, we just tried to organize them in such a fashion that part of them were about how to run a meeting, part of them were about how to put things on the agenda, and kind of group the existing protocols. Apparently, I didn't do a very good job because it died, but I haven't seen anything in here that makes me think that you guys have made a mistake with what you have presented us with. So I'm in support of this.
Mary Ann?
Well, I just wanted to say that I think, you know, there's a lot of questioning out in our community about how things are decided, how things get done. There's questions that there's some type of nefarious dealings in or around City Hall with regards to things. And I think that items nine, conflict of interest, 10, gifts and favors, 11, confidential information, 12, use of public resources, kind of goes to showing the public that we take accountability and ethics and our roles and the roles of the commissioners and the roles of the staff and compliance with the law very seriously. And it shows them that we're working to be above reproach, which I think the city staff is, I believe everybody on the council is, and I'm hoping that this can give our community a better sense of what occurs at City Hall, and they can have confidence that things are done within the law here. And so I think that goes a long way, just to put this in writing. I think you guys did a great job on this. I do have just a couple comments based on the two letters that we received. One of the letters talked about just making sure everybody had the Robert's Rules of Order training, so I'm not sure how we can incorporate maybe some better training on council and staff and commission levels. Do we have some type of crafting when commissions are seated where they learn Robert's Rules of Order and other, I'm trying to read my own notes here, how it should be crafted and provided when officials are first sworn in? So just getting that expert information about how to conduct those things.
If we could maybe get an answer from staff?
And then I have one more question.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question, Mayor Fortem Regans. The short answer is yes, given that we did just host a joint Commissions and Committees meeting that was with Good Governance Training and Practices. And one of the items that we have in terms of feedback from that is, as we go through this upcoming election, but as different appointments are made or affirmed, whatever that looks like, that beginning at the first of the year, we will then have an onboarding, if you will, and in that onboarding, we'll have Brown Act training, Robert's Rules of Order. Obviously, if this is adopted this evening, this will be a part of that conversation. But from the start, we will have an orientation program that's very robust, that allows for that dialogue between our city attorney or deputy attorney, city staff, and being able to set the foundation for good governance moving forward, for everyone to have a firm understanding of what that looks like.
Great. And then my second one had to do the use with digital or electronic devices on the dais. I know that we all respect not being on our phones and take that into consideration. There are some instances where a digital device, you guys can't see, but we have an iPad up here that we watch the different presentations on. And I know that sometimes commissioners in the past have used digital items to be able to help read their notes, be able to look at plans, look at reports, and things like that. Is that something that there's some information or guidance of how that can be implemented so we can provide support for those members that want to have that as a tool?
Counselor?
You guys have your iPads, or?
Yeah, Councilmember Regans, yeah, how I was going to answer that originally, until you phrased the question, was that absolutely, I mean, this is a technological age, you're going to use technology for work and to get work done. It's meant, the intent of it wasn't in the way of doing the business of the city and making sure that the conduct of the city agenda or of meetings and board meetings are done properly, commission meetings are done properly. It's meant that you shouldn't be using anything as a distraction, that you shouldn't have any sort of communication that is outside the proper business, the transparency of local government. That was the intent of that section.
So I'm sorry, so maybe an addition to that would be personal communication devices or such? Go ahead. Thanks, Bruce.
Sure. So on this one, I want to talk about the Robert's Rules also, but on this one, you'll notice, if you look through this, it's the only provision that has a little dot, a bullet point. It's not outlined for him like everything else. This one was actually a point of contention. I didn't think it should be in here at all. Doug wanted something stronger. I think the staff wanted something stronger. If you read this very carefully, it doesn't say anything. It just makes a statement about, it just makes a statement about what is a best practice. It doesn't say it's even suggested that you not do this. So I gave in and thought, okay, if we're going to word it this way, I've got no objection to it, but I actually think it doesn't belong there, and I would, if you want to strike it, I would take that to be like, well, we don't have a motion yet, but I would take that to be like a friendly motion to get rid of that one bullet point, because I think it's superfluous to the rest of the document, and I think we already have the law. The law deals with not communicating with people during the meeting, and you're absolutely right. Even in courts now, they let people bring their laptops in so that they can work on the matter before them with their electronic device. It's an archaic concept that you shouldn't have an electronic device that you're using during a meeting.
So I guess my only comment back would be, you know, is there any recommendation of how to encourage the non-personal use at the dais and that it's a business use? Is that something that maybe the city is providing those electronic devices for use during the meetings, or is that partial? I see, and I understand what Bruce is saying, I hear that portion of it, but I do think it's something that we still need to address to make sure that we have some parameters of the use of digital devices.
Let me maybe add a comment about this before, maybe get a comment from the staff. Bruce is right, we conceded on this with a bullet point. And if you read it, it says, use of smartphones, et cetera, to me, can be distracting. It's more of an advisory comment. It's not meant to be, don't. And I've seen, you know, candidly, at council meetings in the past, people texting during the meeting. I've actually received texts during meetings when I was not in the City Council, and it's not appropriate. Now, the point, and I believe it's in Craig Hill's letter, he brings up a good point, you know, if we're trying to look at an environmental report that's on the digital form, they've got to be able to see it. But that's not what we're precluding here. We're trying to advise people, put your cellphone away, and I'll be candid, when you look at the LA City Council meetings, this is exactly what I didn't want to have occur with us, and we're nowhere close to that. But you see them walking around, talking on their phone when the public comments are on, they're texting each other. It's total disrespectful as well as probably inappropriate for Brown Act. And all we wanted to do here was to have an opportunity to make a statement, keep off the phone. And one of the things that you see, I think in one of the packages, JPIA or whoever was on League of Cities, you can actually do a Brown Act violation by texting amongst each other, and that's the reason why we wanted phones down or phones away. Let's don't even give the appearance we've got a problem. Hence the reason for at least the acknowledgement that we want to keep these off the table. So that was the genesis of this. Bruce is right, we couldn't work out a better answer, so we put a bullet on it.
And give you an idea, this is exactly what we did in our ad hoc committee, this kind of conversation. My view is, there is no law against having your cellphone, your personal cellphone, during a meeting. There's no law against looking at it. Obviously, the Brown Act precludes us from communicating with each other. I would argue it precludes during a public hearing communicating with members of the public about the city's business, but other things beyond that are rude, you know, they may be disrespectful, they may be disruptive, they're not illegal, and therefore, this doesn't say you can't do it. Some places, some cities actually, I think, can properly say, you can't use your personal device during a meeting. I objected to that. All this says is, it can be distracting, and what I mentioned before about the lawyer's rules of professional responsibility, they have rules, and then they've got commentary that explains what the rule means. This is kind of the thing that would typically be in the commentary even, not just, not in the code itself, but in the commentary. But, you know, I can live with it, I can live without it. It doesn't say we can't do this, it just says it could be distracting, and you should be careful about it.
City manager, I mean, city attorney.
Not the manager. So there are specific rules about communication up here and during a public hearing, you cannot be taking any other information in that way, and if you have information on your laptop, you're looking something up on Google or something else that's not part of the public record, that could be a violation as well. So it's not the device that's the problem, it's the use of it, and there are rules out there that regulate that. As, you know, Councilmember Silverstein also mentioned, it could be a Brown Act violation if there was communication surreptitiously up here as well. And that's the whole point of the open meeting laws, is that we have this discussion in the public. But those rules apply regardless of what's in this policy. If you want to put something above and beyond that, I remember, you know, Councilmember Wagner would put his, you know, device up here in a plastic bag to show that transparency and there was not, you know, any communication to him going on during the meeting. That's a nice thing to do, but it's not required, and sometimes people need to be able to communicate if something's happening medically with their family or other things. So it's up to you what you want to do there, but just, you know, those rules will apply whether or not you put it in the policy.
That was exactly the point I made throughout, when we were drafting this, that the law's the law, whether it's in this policy or not.
But let's don't have, and to go back to that, part of this is the appearance, you know, by the fact you might have your phone in your hand gives the appearance that maybe you're doing something else. If we don't have the phones in our hand, you don't even get into that issue. So that was it. Paul, you have a comment, or Mary Ann?
Those two have had their lights on for a long time.
Do you want to go? I've talked, so.
Yeah, you know, look, I don't have a problem with the code of conduct, and if it's enforced, as you guys have said tonight, I don't have a problem with it. The last part of this seems to be the opportunity for some punitive steps, right? I mean, I can kick somebody off the reprimand censure, loss of committee relays on assignments, removal from an appointed commission board. I mean, this is a political body, okay? And as much as you like to say that politics don't play a role in any of this stuff, there's a chance that they will, and if that happens, it gets nasty. Just, I'm just saying, that's going to be a nasty process if that's interjected into this code of conduct.
But if we didn't have a code of conduct, all of those things that are on that last page, that would be the law. The City Council has that authority. This just states some of the things the City Council has the authority to do, and it doesn't state anything that it doesn't have the authority to do.
Already. We already have.
This is just giving examples of things that the law already provides, and again, we made sure, I tried my best to make sure.
City council's got the ability to throw me off the city council?
No, it doesn't say that on there. That doesn't say that.
Does not say it at all.
That's not on there because that's something the city council doesn't have the ability to do. But all the things that are in here have been subject to judicial decisions, saying this is something that the city council has the power to do.
Okay. I'm just saying, if it becomes a political ball, I think we're going to have a problem. But other than that, I don't have a problem with the Code of Conduct, all right? But it's my comment.
Any more comments?
Comment?
On the rule, I was just saying, on the Roberts Rules of Order, maybe what we could do is, I think that's a great point. And if you want it added to this, maybe we could adopt this tonight, but come back, you know, with a paragraph to add by way of an amendment at a future time.
Well, I think staff, though, is already developing a policy of onboarding. Or so, is that something that we need to codify here? Or is that just something that'll be within the city best practices?
On that subject, it seems to me that when I came on, we were handed copies of, I think, Rasmussen's Rules.
Rosenberg's.
Rosenberg's.
Which doesn't apply.
What?
Which doesn't apply.
Which, and I could see the relationship of them to Roberts Rules. But I always wondered why we were using Rosenberg's rather than Roberts. And yes, Steve.
So Rosenberg's was put out through, pretty much through the League of California Cities. I believe it was developed, I think, with, associated with the city attorneys. It was, gosh, it was probably more than, it was a while ago now. The idea was that Rosenberg's actually takes the applicable sections of Roberts Rules and puts them in a form that is actually compatible with the Brown Act. Roberts Rules is very archaic and pretty difficult and a lot of people really understand it. Rosenberg was an attempt to simplify that specifically for local meetings and specifically so that they were, again, not in conflict and working in concert with the Brown Act. But not all cities have adopted them.
Yeah, well, it's kind of like Roberts Rules for dummies. And when we got, when we were elected and we were handed that, I just laughed. It's like, why are you giving me the thing that we're not told that's governing us? But it is what it is.
Yeah, actually, when I got it, I thought that was in my commission days. I thought that's what we were under. It wasn't until I came to the council, I found out it was Roberts. But that said, it is a more clear pathway. I know I took a class on Roberts, and it's very complex. You really want to get fine tuning and really screw up a meeting. You can do it well with Roberts.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Code of Conduct.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? I'll put it to a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Outstaying.
We got one abstention, four approvals. Right, Kelsey? All right. The motion is approved. Let's move on to adoption of emergency operation plan.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. So we are here to provide the update on the emergency operations plan. In 2023, the city began the process of updating the emergency operations plan, also known as EOP. The emergency operations plan addresses the city of Malibu's planned response to emergency situations associated with natural disasters, technological incidents, and national security emergencies. In California, all governmental emergency plans are required to comply with the state's standardized emergency management system, as well as FEMA's National Incident Management System in order to be eligible for state and federal disaster assistance. The developmental process and plan are established by federal guidance and state law. This is a brief timeline of the EOP planning process. In May 2023, the city secured a contract with ANCO Technologies to assist with the update of the EOP. From June to October, Public Safety and ANCO Technologies met with numerous stakeholders to incorporate updated information and identify emergency response roles and capabilities. The plan also incorporated community resources, such as Community Emergency Response Team, Volunteers on Patrol, Boys and Girls Club, Chamber of Commerce, Arson Watch, American Red Cross, CBO, and Disaster Communication Service into the response procedures. In February 2024, the city received the rough draft documents for review. The EOP Part One was finalized in June of 2024. On September 12th, the Malibu Disaster Council met to review the plan and voted in favor of recommending the city council, recommending to the city council that the plan be adopted. The Disaster Council is established by ordinance and includes representatives from public and private organizations having an official emergency responsibility in Malibu. The council is charged with reviewing emergency plans and making recommendations to the city council. The content of this plan encompasses a variety of different topics that focus on all hazards approach, roles and responsibility, organization and activation, coordination, mutual aid, and inclusivity. The plan also has numerous companion annex documents, such as evacuation, volunteer management, donation management, critical infrastructure, access and functional needs, active threat, and pandemic. Due to unforeseen circumstances, the consultants were not able to finalize these companion documents. And staff are currently working to complete these documents by the end of calendar year. And then that is it for the emergency operations plan update, unless you have any additional questions.
Okay, do we have any questions from the council before we go to public comments? Being done, let's go to public comments.
Mayor, your microphone, I understand you just asked us to check if there was any public.
I was very eloquent. Do we have any questions or comments from the council? If not, let's go to public comments.
We don't have any speaker slips, and I'm checking. But no, we don't have any raised hands on Zoom for this item.
Okay. So it's back up to us. Any questions or comments?
I was, I read this, and I really liked the fact that all of the different things that we learn about insert are laid out in a reasonable pattern here so that people will be, it actually makes a lot more sense than the manuals do. Thank you very much.
I'll make, nobody has a comment, so I'll make a couple of quick comments. I do encourage the council members and anyone that's running for council, if you get an opportunity, take the cert level training for FEMA, emergency management systems, the state emergency systems. It's whatever's in the classes. I remember taking those. It opened my eyes as to what we could and can't do in a city. And I encourage the council members to take those courses. They're online. It's easy to do. I'd like to go through some quick comments that I had. Role of the council, I think, I'll highlight something that I found in here back in one of the appendixes. We have no role in this. If you look at, as I read it, outside of policy, we're not supposed to be involved in running the EOC or the emergency operations. Is that correct? Shake your head yes, Susan.
Yes, but you do have a role, but not there.
That's right. I just want to emphasize that. Steve.
Yeah, the big part of the city manager's role, which is also the director of management of the EOC, the operator, sorry, the EOC director, is to make sure that the council is kept informed, up to speed. There may be situations where we do need to bring the council in quickly to act on things. So a big part of my job will be to make sure that the council members are fully informed and aware of everything that's going on, because you do serve a very critical role, obviously, in a disaster. The community looks to you. They work off your example, and you're integral, and you're important for also for us getting the information out to the community. So we're happy to have some further discussions about that. But I know in my past experiences, it was not unusual to see council members, if they were not evacuated, coming by this EOC and seeing what's going on. And that was very important for us to keep the council members involved and informed throughout the process. So you do have a role there.
But we're not running the place. That's the emphasis I want to have.
Yeah, we won't let you in, but we'll tell you what's going on.
You can look at the glass. All right, I want to go to page 31 of the report. I think you left somebody out on the coordination with volunteer and private agencies, the medicals. I don't see them in here at all. And I'll go back to, when I took my first cert training in 2008, one of the comments that was made is that there was a standby list of doctors that could be assembled to provide medical care in the community. I also know from some of my emergency room doctor friends, they're not going to stick around here. They're going to go to the hospital and try and help where they can at the emergency room. But at the same time, if we're cut off, we may need to call the doctors. And I'm looking over at Dr. Chaney, Dr. Frigman. We're going to have to bring people together that may have to be our emergency services that go beyond first aid. So I would encourage you, if you want to, to add medicals into this. We just had a letter of support from 17 doctors located here in the city of Malibu. And I think they might be a good list to start from if you wanted to try and bring their involvement or get their comments.
You know, and I absolutely agree with what you're saying. The only reason they weren't included at this time is that we don't currently have an organized group of doctors, such as what you're speaking of. But it is in the works. In fact, I sit on the Malibu Schools Public Safety Committee, and they are working with Dr. Katz at Malibu Urgent Care to establish a system to recognize doctors who can assist when needed and to give them a pass. So they're working with the fire department to establish a pass for them to be able to come in and assist. So we're keeping an eye on that. And as soon as it's a little more organized, we will absolutely be adding it in. And I just want to say, the emergency plan is a living document. If you notice, there's that one page where we log as we make edits to it through the year. And that would be the type of thing that we would be adding in there because we're constantly finding out about new resources. In fact, today, we had a meeting with another resource that we will be adding in that we were unaware of. So that will be coming in the future.
Okay, very good. And Dr. Katz is a good one. The, as you know, I had an involvement, times passed, with the urgent care. They have backup generators, emergency equipment. That is, that's as close as we're going to get to an emergency room at the moment. That's all the comments I had on this. Paul, do you have a comment?
No, I wanted to support you on the medical personnel's access to the community during an emergency. And in the old days, there actually used to be an actual badge given to them. I don't know why that program went away, but there were, doctors had a badge would, I think it came from the sheriff's department, which would actually let them through and so they could give aid and basically look after the needs of the firefighters or emergency responders who had injuries, not to mention the actual residents. So that's something that is worth reestablishing, I think.
Okay. Mary Ann?
I had the same note on my list. Look at that.
See it? We didn't even talk.
Yeah, just, I heard that a lot in the months after Woolsey from several doctors, that there wasn't any organization, and so they wanted to make sure that they had that. So I would encourage that get done and implement it as quickly, whether it's through the sheriffs or the fire department, whichever's the one that's going to get them through that sheriff's safety line.
And by the way, in my neighborhood, we have doctors that live in my neighborhood that don't practice here. And I think that would be another good thing to have, that if they can't get out of the city because we're trapped for some reason, it'd be great to be able to have them assembled somewhere and know who they are. And I think Dr. Katz and some of the other doctors probably know everybody else, so it wouldn't be hard to get that list together, whether it's an ID badge or whatever. Bruce?
So first of all, I'll make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
I wasn't done.
Well, she isn't done.
You can make the motion, I'll second it.
No, I mean, I had other questions I wanted to get through.
Well, you can just do it for discussion purposes.
In Woolsey, we had a number of residents that stayed behind. And there was some questions and issues about supplies and other things that came through. I, you know, there's a section with coordination with volunteers and private agencies and such. And I know that was just basically the Point Dune neighborhood and others that stayed behind that kind of organized that. And I know there was, you know, some involvement for Darius' things. I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that that will occur again and how that that can be a part of the actual community response to things.
Yeah, and that was actually a main focus of this update. That's why we had so many meetings with the various community groups because we wanted to fold them into the plan. Unfortunately, that's not reflected in this base plan. The plan that you're seeing tonight is the part that had to be, legally, we had to get this adopted.
Okay.
The companion documents include more of the nuts and bolts of how that's going to happen, especially in the volunteer management plan. We go into a lot more detail on each of the various community groups, you know, what their capabilities are, what role they'll play. So we, this plan, I mean, our approach going forward is to take advantage of all the amazing community resources because this city is just, it's amazing. Our consultants were just blown away. They had never worked with this city with so many community-based volunteer organizations. And the capabilities, they were just, they couldn't believe it.
Well, and that was one where it just was, you know, organic that it just came to be. And so they're not affiliated with any particular group. They're just seasoned residents that know, you know, that have been, through the decades, used to little or no response or help. So they just know what to do to help one another out, so. And we can seize what's going on in other states in the country that those are often the most successful ones. So I want to make sure that we cultivate and support that. I didn't notice that the county beaches weren't listed on public facilities. And so I just wanted to make sure that that got updated.
You know, I looked at that in the plan. I couldn't really see a place, I mean, I can see it's definitely included when we, in the evacuation annex because we talk about that extensively. I'll relook at the plan to see if there's a place where we need to list it, because it is a resource for us. We have, you know, a memorandum of understanding with them to be able to utilize the entire parking lot for, you know, temporary shelter site for, you know, very, whatever we need it for, basically.
Yeah, and I mean, Chief Smith mentioned that that might be something that they're utilizing for staging and things, but.[1675.22]
Correct. And in our plan, it has, we have a whole layout of how we would accommodate both the fire resources and down more towards the end is where we would have community members, people with animals, because we know people with horses, large animals tend to go there. And we're not going to fight it, we're just going to lean into it and work with it, right?
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
I think historically, again, that's been something else. And I didn't see, and maybe this is going to be forthcoming in other things, but also generators for the signals, the water tanks, even the grocery stores and the gas stations, to make sure that those are supported during those times. Is that a part of this document, or is that something that's going to be one of the...
So the generators for the traffic systems, that's part of the evacuation plan. Outside that, that's the only part, I mean, because this is the emergency plan for the city, how we operate, you know, generators for commercial properties, that's not really something that we get, you know, into that. That's for, you know, private citizens to get their backup power.
Okay, well, I mean, I don't know if the rest of the council wants to discuss that, but I think that's something that's important, that we should be having the conversation about, and just making sure, especially the gas stations, because we know people have needs for that. The grocery stores, the food's going to waste anyway, so let's get it to be able to utilize it and help with the community groups, would be my suggestion on that, so.
Yeah, and it wasn't all right, or to at least do an assessment, kind of survey the private, you know, private people to kind of see what the status is, so that we at least understand what the current situation is, and if there's a way to support or assist them, to enable them, to make it easier for them to acquire, we could do that.
Okay. And then, if you could just give a little education, I know I've asked you this question in the past, but it's always good for people to understand. Can you explain what the difference between the EOC and the incident command post or incident command, let's see what else I had, incident base or staging area would be?
Yeah, so the incident command post, that's where the first responders gather to coordinate, a coordinated response. So sheriff, fire, CHP, whoever's involved, they go to the command post, that's field operations. The emergency operations center, that's more at the city level or county level. We're just doing support to the field. So in the city of Malibu, we're providing support to our field operators, which would be like our public works, building inspectors. It could also be, you know, the county first responders, but the EOC is where we're supporting field operations. But in a contract city, what tends to happen is our biggest role is getting information out to the community. So we are constantly in communication with the field operations to get that situational picture and then communicating that out to the community. And that's probably the primary role for a contract city. I mean, there is some field support that we are providing, but I would say 75% of what we're doing is getting information, planning ahead for that next step of recovery. I mean, even in Woolsey, we spend a ton of time, you know, the planning staff, just sitting and working through, how are we going to start this when we go to open up City Hall again? So it's a little different operation. We don't manage field operations, not, you know, fire and sheriff. We can manage our own public works, et cetera, but, and then staging areas where you would put resources that are ready to go to address a particular issue.
And those are oftentimes located in different locations, correct? They're not usually in the same.
Staging area or the command post?
The EOC may be one place, the command post may be someplace else, a staging area could be someplace else.
Command post is usually going to be, well, if it's a really large event, it's going to be somewhere, it could be far away. I mean, I've been in somewhere, the command post is 15, 20 miles away. When I was in Ventura County, and here, the command post was at, yeah. So you have to be in a safe location, right? Especially for a large event. Now, if it's a smaller, more localized event, you could have a command post just adjacent to the incident. But again, you need to be in a safe location, because they don't want to have to be moving the command post. It's very important that they find a place, you know, that's safe. The EOC, I forgot what the question was.
Just that they're not always located together and just describing.
No, no, the EOC and the command post are always separate. And so that's why we always send representatives to the command post to communicate to us, to have that back and forth. So we'll usually have, you know, staff, frequently, the city manager will go there for a while. I mean, at least in past incidences, sometimes they're in the EOC, goes back and forth, we'll have maybe public works director go. So we get representatives there. So, and now we have our fire liaisons who speak fire language, so they can help us get that information.
Thank you. I will second whatever motion is put forward.
One thing you didn't clarify, the fire department is in charge. It's not the sheriff's department, it's the fire department.
Well, if it's a fire, correct. And just for, like, I think there had been a question earlier about evacuations, and just for everybody's understanding, the fire department decides what needs to be evacuated in a fire, and then law enforcement by law implements the evacuation, and the city goes along and communicates whatever that is, basically.
Could be the sheriff, it could be a riot, you know.
Well, it depends. Like an earthquake, the fire department's in charge for an earthquake as well.
Yeah, the fire department tends to be in charge in a lot of incidences. Most incidences, I mean, sheriff, it would be more if there was like an act of violence, you know, active shooter, something more law enforcement oriented.
Usually disasters. If you look at the FEMA plan, it's.
Just have two comments. One is, whoever's watching this may notice, I've been more noticeably quiet on this one than on others. Doug has said before, many times, we each have our, we each bring a different expertise to what we do here. I think the staff did a great job on this one, and I know that we've got council members who know a lot more about safety than I do. So, you know, I speak a lot when it comes to legal type issues, and I kind of sit here more quietly and listen to other people who have more expertise in this area. And I think that we work really well together because of that. The only safety issue I just want to bring up, I didn't want to challenge Chief Smith before, but the point about people being able to go to the beach, and I understand the staging is in the parking lot. I mean, they're not staging vehicles, I don't believe, on the sand. And if they're not, I think we ought to be looking into having oxygen down there, because it seems like it's one of the safest places you can be if you can't get out of town, maybe even safer if you choose not to go out of town. And we ought to be making sure that people who choose that option are as safe as they can be while they're there.
Paul?
As to your last suggestion, Bruce, the CERT team has talked several times about Zuma Beach, and Topanga Beach have both been evacuation centers in the past. And those are the ideal type of setup, because the, there aren't any houses nearby that are going to feed flames onto them. If you were to just be down in front of the beaches, in the fire in 93, there were some beach houses that caught on fire. You wouldn't want to be sitting in front of them when that, when the one behind you catches on fire. So that's, that is, as far as I know, we really only have two that are really good for that. Along incidental bluff, if you were to go there early and go down to the beach, you know, you're going to be fine. But that's, you know, it's something you can do. And as far as Mary Ann's conversation about the backup generators for the markets and the gas stations, something to keep them working. If we do have an event someday that closes us off from Los Angeles and the Valley, the fact that there is markets full of food, it would be great if they didn't go bad, because that's several days worth of food for the people who live here. And it's much better for, after Woolsey, we had a real problem with that. So, thank you.
You know, Last Resort is, Everclear has a song called, I think it's called Santa Monica, about going out in the ocean and watching the world burn. So you can always go to the ocean if you have to.
By the way.
We're not allowed to fish there. It's a marine protected area.
The, one evacuation area is Will Rogers Beach, that's for the eastern side. All right, I think we talked this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Having gone through a few of these, and I just wanted, I think the comment about the beach and being an evacuation spot, I think that definitely has merit. I think part of, I think what we want to keep in mind is, as these things fold, as these things unfold over time, the needs of people change. And so if you need to get somebody out quickly, to get them away, to be able to save them, I think you take whatever you can to get them out of that. But generally, what you're going to look at is after that, that, you know, you're going to need to get them to a place where they have resources, where they have shelter, where they have a place they can sleep, eat, contact their loved ones, whatnot. A lot of times in these situations, you try to encourage people to get out of the area as much as possible, because you don't know what's going to happen, and there's a good chance that you might end up, you know, if you miss that opportunity, if the opportunity's there and you can take it, great. And if you're not, then you're going to have to deal with that. But if you can get out, that makes it a lot easier for everybody who's here, or even for the people who end up can't getting out of here, because it's going to be very difficult those first few days, as you know, to not only get the resources for the people here, but to be able to continue to bring resources in can be very challenging. So you don't want to have a large population that is stuck in the disaster area, and as you can, if you can get them out to someplace safe, that's always your best bet. Thank you.
Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion, I believe we have a motion and a second. All right, no further discussion. Let's put it to a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, unanimous pass. Thank you very much. With that, we're approaching the end of the meeting. I'd like to close the meeting in remembrance of three people, Joe Ruggles, Paul Randall, and Peter Lippman. Thanks, everybody. Good meeting, and thank you for adopting to the new format. See you in two weeks.